Good afternoon. We're going to come back on the record, well, actually, it's a new meeting. We're on the record September 27th, 2021. I'm calling this meeting to order. Would ask that you rise for invocation and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance to the United States of America and its flag as well as the Texas flag. Commissioner Gonzalez, would you lead us in prayer?
Lord God, Heavenly Father, we ask you to continue to bless in us, to bless us as you have in the past. We ask you to be with us today, tomorrow, and from now on to continue to help those that need the help. Lord, we give you thanks for everything you've given us and to continue to work for this county and provide for citizens what they need. Lord, we give you thanks for our employees that work hard every single day. Protect this Commissioners Court, that we can work together. Lord, we asking just to protect our families also and also pray for those that need prayers at this time, especially those in the hospital, especially those going through surgery. Lord, we ask you just to give us the strength and the courage and the wisdom that we need, as well as all these people here in the Commissioners Court. In your name, Lord, we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all, honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
For the clerk, I do certify that all Commissioners are present and a quorum has been made. The time is 1:11 PM. And again, we are in the third, we are located at third floor, Nuasis County Courthouse at 901 North Leopard, in the courtroom of Commissioners Court. And Timothy will give us a safety briefing now at this time. Timothy?
Good afternoon, Judge. Commissioners, we're meeting today in the third floor of the Nuasis County Courthouse at 901 11th Street. The restrooms are located on the right-hand side of this floor next to the drinking fountains. There are six fire extinguishers located throughout the third floor HM area. Please make note of the closest fire extinguisher near you. AED devices are located on every floor throughout the Nuasis County Courthouse. In the event of a cardiac emergency, this floor's automated electronic defibrillator is located next to the Human Resources Office. Participants responsible for dialing 911 today will be Connie. In the event of evacuation, the court's egress route will be down the atrium stairs, exiting La Paz Street entrance, and dispersing in the parking lot for security purposes once across the street. Should there be a need to shelter in place, the court and its attendees will remain in the courtroom. Depending upon the severity of the incident, the courtroom's double doors will be secured and remain so until given further instructions from the Nuasis County Sheriff's Office or other law enforcement agencies. Our shared safety topics for today, beginning Sunday, October 3rd through Saturday, October 9th, the National Fire Protection Association has designated it as Fire Prevention Week. More safety information will be published throughout the county in the coming days. That concludes my safety brief.
Appreciate that. At this time, I'll ask Belinda to share with me any...
No one has signed up.
Okay. There are no names that I need to call on, and I see nobody online, but we'll give the opportunity for anybody online to, at this time, designate that you would like to make a public comment by raising your hand virtually with the icon of a hand. Okay, seeing none, I'll move on to general information reports. And because Commissioners, we really just had one, I did not ask Garrett to come down, but he is available to answer any of your questions. I just wanted to report that as of yesterday, we had 187 people in the hospital, 82 in ICU, and our cases continue to decline, which is a good thing. Our RIC has served over, our statewide RIC has served over, my goodness, over 1,600 individuals, and we've done double that at our Physicians West location. We also have an incredible lineup of locations for vaccination throughout the community, and you should have a copy of all of those at your disposal. If you need to know where we will be located, I think that's something that we can provide to you. But I always let people know that La Palmera and the outlets on the bay are city-county public health, and they're open every day, which is great. Just please be sure and tell your constituents to continue to refer to nuasisknows.com so we speak with one unified message. As you well know, the U.S. Center for Disease Control, that's CDC, has issued guidance for booster shots for those fully vaccinated with the Pfizer only, Pfizer COVID-19 vaccine only. And people that are eligible are listed on our website, but those include people over 65 years of age and those with underlying medical conditions of 18 and older. Also, a requirement of at least six months has, unless you're immunocompromised, has been issued as well. There's a list of medical conditions if you're concerned about which ones those are. And there's some other great opportunities to find out where we have what I would call the satellite vaccination clinics. Those include Goodwill, Greenwood Senior Center, Phallus, and Flower Bluff, and many others. Lots of schools, I believe, I saw on the calendar this week. So with that, I just wanted to let you know that all of those things are, all of that messaging, again, can be found very easily. But actually, here comes Garrett. I was just saying, Garrett, if anyone had any questions, they could refer to you. But I do want to tell you that we're very much looking forward to getting our numbers like El Paso. Garrett, I was thrilled this morning to know that there is a Texas county that has shot for the moon and hit it, and that's El Paso County. They've gotten 75% of their population vaccinated, and by doing so, they are one of the lowest rates in the entire state of Texas on positivity. This tells us one thing, that if we can get our vaccination rates up high, we're going to keep our positivity rates down very low. So I'll yield to you and yield to the Commissioners. Garrett is here to help answer any questions you might have on any of our COVID-19 response. Okay, Commissioners?
Judge, may I add?
Absolutely, please do.
Just want to make sure that people are aware that Friday, the CDC did clear the third doses or booster shots for people in certain situations, and we are readying for that. We already have the material for that, that we will be making available, and the new, our new site that I told you about the other day, we'll have that available. So just wanted to make sure that you're aware of that. Other than that, I didn't have anything new.
Perfect. Commissioners, any questions? Commissioner Modis?
Just in general, I know we've had very heavy agendas, which is good. I appreciate the work we're trying to tackle for the county, but when, it doesn't have to be right now, but if we can see, foresee in the future, maybe we can get Annette to come in during one of these presentations and have her. I mean, it's great to have Garrett, and you're a very active judge, but also just anything in general that may come up that we can ask her.
I think it's good.
I know she does that a lot for the city and don't require her to be here that often, but it's been a while since she's been in. So just so we can match a day with her and with us, just to have her come in, and if there's not much, that's fine.
That's great.
But if we can just do that every once in a while.
Garrett, would you be so good as to help make that happen for us?
Maybe just every quarter until hopefully, God willing, this thing's done, but...
It's a great idea.
Great idea, and I know that she would be happy to do so. And honestly, if Annette can't, Dr. Wilmot is also a wonderful second. If you don't mind, you know, make sure they're, really, just check with us every meeting and say, is this a good meeting to come to?
Yeah, great. We'll do that.
Judge, I have a question.
Yes.
Again, like Commissioner Modis said, we've done tackle a lot. I don't remember, did we approve Mr. Garrett's contract?
Yes.
We did? Okay, I just didn't remember then.
Yeah, you did not ratify the payment to the company that brought Mr. Garrett, but as I said the last time, that's, it's an immaterial, I mean, it's, we asked for the ratification and that did not happen.
All right. Thank you, Judge.
Thank you. Okay, thank you so much. We really appreciate you. All right. And so we're going to move on to the minutes, and Kara's prepared multiples. September 8th, is there a motion to approve September 8th minutes? Yes, motion, and how about a second? And a second, and all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, post same sign. Okay. And September 13th minutes are also available for your review.
Motion approved.
Okay, thank you so much. And a second, please?
Second.
Thank you. A motion, a second for September 13th, approval of the minutes. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. And then discuss and consider the approving order designating Wednesday as the day of the week that the court will meet in the regular term. Agenda item A1, this is pursuant to Section 81 of the Local Government Code, something we do every year, right, Belinda?
Yes, this is something y'all do every year, that the Local Government Code requires y'all to set the day of the week that y'all are going to be convening in regular term for the next fiscal year. So we normally bring it at your last meeting of the previous fiscal year. So this was an order that looks exactly like the one y'all did last year, just updating the years, designating Wednesday as the day of the week that y'all would meet in regular term.
Okay, so is there a motion to approve Wednesday as our, as our day? To keep it, it's really been Wednesday. Would you all like to make a motion?
Come on.
Okay, motion, and then I'll second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, post same sign. Okay, great. And now we're going to go to item number two, which is the supplemental agreement with John Brier for purposes of providing services to the Nuasis County Industrial Commission through the, relating to their economic development mission. And I'm going to ask Teresa to help bring forth the funding source for this. This is a three-month contract only through the end of December, and it's my understanding that the funds are already there. So this just makes certain that we have a written contract for the dollars that we've already appropriated for through December 31st. So they can, and then John is on the line, and he might make a small presentation after we talk funding, so he can tell you, actually, I think if he's not in Galveston, he will be in Galveston tomorrow before Nuasis County's Development Commission working with, as we're working with the Corps of Engineers this week and in the upcoming weeks on all of our opportunities that we have from, from the sediment incident management plan. Teresa?
Yes. This is going to be funded from the special revenue account, the Nuasis County Development Commission Fund, Department 1389. It's for the first quarter of next year, October through December, at a rate of $7,680 per month.
Okay, so these dollars are already there, and they're appropriated through December?
That is correct.
Okay. So are there, John, will you want, let me ask if there's any questions regarding Teresa's information? Okay, John, do you want to just briefly give the court some background as to what the NCDC is working on, and specifically what you are leading, what efforts you're leading? Oh, I'm sorry, John, we got to get you off mute. Hang on.
He needs to unmute himself.
There he is. Okay.
Hello, I can talk now.
Yeah, go ahead.
Commissioners, Judge, appreciate the opportunity to speak to you today. I'm excited about what the NCDC has been able to accomplish over this first, this year. And just as setting the stage for this, now, there are really three things that economic development, an entity like the NCDC focuses on, and we, along with our Commissioners on the NCDC, have been doing this. And let me sort of set the stage, there are really three things. One is trying to recruit new industries into our community to not just redivide the economic pie, but to expand that economy. The next one is to help existing industries grow. And over the last year, that's been a challenge, obviously, with COVID, but the NCDC really has stepped up with a number of our committees to look at ways that they can help those companies that live and breathe in Nuasis County, how they were able to try to survive and prepare themselves for when we come away from that. The last thing is working on infrastructure and vision. In other words, looking for ways that the economic development entity of our county can make a difference in preparing for the future with new infrastructure. The other thing is to take into account what the vision is of our community at large, the county, and in this case, obviously, there are Commissioners and the judge. Let me just sort of, after years' period of time, there are so many things that we touch and do that I thought the best way to handle this would be to take each one of these categories and talk about things that have happened within, within those categories. Of course, when it comes to recruiting new industries, the one that most people think about and that we should be excited about, and that's Amazon. What a great addition to our economy, and it's going to be a good addition to the tax base. I just talked to our tax assessor last week to identify when we might have an idea, when we'll know what their equipment will be taxed. He doesn't have that yet. He says that that will probably happen, we'll know that for sure. What type of additional revenue that may mean for the county sometime in January, we keep up with that stuff. And not to mention the jobs to our people. It's in a great location, as all of you know, close to the airport, close to Robston. So that is the one that most people would think about. But we're working on a number of other ones that have real opportunities to them. A couple of those, the companies themselves have asked that we do not divulge their name, so I'll just talk in generalizations. There's an aviation-related company that, actually, I will give credit, to Visit Corpus Christi. They found that, and in a meeting that we, the NCDC, had with Visit Corpus Christi, we discovered that we, and I particularly, had some contacts that would be very, very helpful because they were looking to not only do business here, but provide services other places, that we were able to put them in touch with folks that make this a more viable opportunity. Then we had two electric companies. One is Broad Reach Power, and that was talked about a little bit when we came to talking about how the county could and should and is looking to help Naval Station Corpus Christi and the Corpus Christi Army Depot. This company has a product that they're already bringing in here. They're already going to be providing that battery power to the area in our industrial base, but this may be able to help some of the issues with the Naval Air Station. So that's one that we're excited about. This is a work in progress, but it's one that we really help benefit. Now, let me also say, sometime I may talk a little too long, and so if anybody has any questions, I ask you to please let me know, and I'd be glad to give you more information that you might like. We have another battery company that's looking to come here that we're working on. It is one that we have, they've asked us not to divulge our name for a lot of good business reasons, but it's another company that we're working with that, if and when it materialized, it will add jobs, it will add tax base to our county. So those are, those are three examples of ones that we work on recruitment, and, you know, those are the ones that always get the most, people get excited about, as they should. But really, economic development entities should and NCDC is working on helping existing industries grow, and those industries that fall into the category of selling their particular product or service outside of Nuasis County and expanding that economic pie. You know, it's been interesting because I'm going to talk about one project that actually falls into the third category, the second and third category, and it's a project that really has substance to it in the form of helping, potentially helping the port, at the same time potentially helping. We discovered through work with A&amp;M System that Dr. Jim Wall, who is in charge of applied research for all of A&amp;M System, Jim's an old friend, and I happened to be talking, and he started talking about one of his projects that he's working on as part of what's happening with the Army's Futures Command. And he just sort of casually said, yeah, I'm working on this project to work, to develop a modeling and simulation program using artificial intelligence that can help large commercial ports be more effective, more efficient. And I immediately asked, because he and I have known one another for quite a while, I said, Jim, have you talked to the people at Corpus Christi? He said, well, not on this yet, but, he said, oh, by the way, I happen to have a teaching position down in Corpus. And so we, we, along with the Vice President at A&amp;M Corpus Christi, and with Jeff Pollak at the port, we asked Dr. Wall to send a white paper down. He sent it down. About three weeks ago, we had our first strategy session, and both the port and A&amp;M Corpus Christi saw the value in this and the potential to help both our port and another focus of the vision of, that I know that the President out at Corpus Christi A&amp;M is absolutely passionate about, and the judge has actually been working on this too, and that is, how can we help A&amp;M Corpus Christi become a real, expand their research capability? So this is a project that sort of reaches from helping existing organizations grow, but at the same time, looking for opportunities to develop our organizations here, like these two major entities, grow into something so much more, with the goal and the potential of helping to create a high-tech industry here in Corpus Christi, which a lot of people may think that that's not necessarily going to happen, but it really is because you need two things to develop a high-tech industry, and that is, you need a major, you need a research university, and you need to have a beautiful place to live, because the raw product of a high-tech industry is the intellectual capital created at our, at a research university. And we have a beautiful place to live, so it's a real opportunity.
John, let me...
We talked about some of the other things when it comes to infrastructure. We've been doing a lot of work, when I say we, I mean the NCDC, we've been doing a lot of work supportive of things associated with the repurposing and reuse of our, of our historical, our county courthouse. It's a great opportunity, but with that opportunity comes the challenge of what the judge has been working on it, NCDC's been working on it, the port has, and the city has, and that is, how we make sure that we get local control of redistribution of the easement when the Harbor Bridge comes down. That's been, that's an awfully important part of this. We actually have had some developers that are interested in it. One of those developers have been, have played a great role in looking at identifying how some of that, some of that repurposed property may be used, and would be desperately important to get really large developers interested in our courthouse and in our downtown. And that's one of the other things we've been working on, and that is reaching out around the country to large national developers, telling them about the real opportunities in Corpus's future. The other one, of course, is the Oyster Restoration Project and North Beach. I don't need to go into that, I think, very much. I think everybody, I think all the Commissioners, I know the judge is familiar with that. What a great opportunity for an Oasis County and our whole region, both of those two projects. And one of the things I've been working on, and the NCD's been, C's been working on, over the last month, two months maybe, right now, and that is with the Corps of Engineers, and this is very unusual, the Corps actually contacted the judge initially, and highlighted the fact that they would like to talk to the judge and to the NCDC about how they could repurpose sediment used through development of a strategic plan for the use of the sediment, the type of sediment that's coming out of the process of deepening and widening of the ship channel. And over the last month and a half or so, I've been meeting with the Corps, the judge has met with the Commander, Colonel Vale. We have a follow-on meeting set for the 21st of October. Actually, I am going to be meeting with the staff that will be working on this project. But what a great opportunity, and it's not just about these two projects that this type of sediment reuse could mean so much to, but it's about looking into the future, something the NCDC has embraced, and we're very, very fortunate to have three members of the NCDC that each have a very unique experience and relationship with the Corps. Now, of course, one of them, which most people wouldn't think about, John Dawson, which is in charge of all facilities, he's one of our Commissioners, he is in charge of all the facility, development, maintenance, upkeep at Corpus Christi A&amp;M. But in a previous life, Dr. Dawson was a private area developer, working with the city of Fort Worth when they did their major Trinity repurposing of the Trinity River. So we have people on the NCDC, Catherine Hilliard, Wayne Squires, both experienced with the port, and both experienced with the Corps of Engineers, that will be available to help in these projects. Now, the judge said I would be short, and I have not been, probably, but that, that's sort of a thumbnail, and it really is only a thumbnail, because the NCDC has been so active in other things, putting organizations together. On Wednesday this week, we've organized the Ms. Boyd from Stonewater and Jason Green from, that manages our fairground. We're going to have, we're going to have a lunch meeting where both of those entities will bring their respective staff so that we can have them work more and more together to bring more and more opportunities to our fairground. I could go on a lot longer, but I will stop there.
Thanks, John.
And say, if you have any questions, please let me know.
Yes, I'll make certain that we do ask. I just want to express... I just want to express my gratitude. This court is mindful that we made a commitment, which was a good commitment, and it got honored in the budget again this year, to put $50,000 in from the court towards economic development. But really, all the burden has fallen on you guys to get the advance, you know, commitment that you would go raise your, the rest. And also, you were able to create that relationship for the past year and a half with Director of External Affairs Omar Garcia at the port. And so as a result, this meeting is sort of a carryover of two meetings ago. But Chairman Zahn came and said it is his intention, based on all of your work, to make the recommendation to their committee to be able to not just extend their, their, their allocation of funds, but to expand it. And so I think that's something I wanted the court to, to know, that that's really thanks to you and thanks to, you know, obviously, the relationship building that you guys have done over the last year and a half. But again, I'll open it up for questions, but I do want to just point out that unlike other contracts that we've been talking about over the last two courts, this one is for three months, and it is a funded source because of the, the dollars that, that we do have allocated to this program. And that's because we got them allocated from outside sources. So it does not impact us the way other particular contracts do, where, you know, other than we've made a commitment, which I think is the right one, to invest some money in economic development at the same level as last year. So are there any questions here for Mr. Breyer?
I have questions for Dale, actually.
Go ahead.
Dale, this got brought up in the budget, and I didn't have it in front of me when it got brought up. And so I'm, I'm confused as to where the money comes from. So the port's given us 90, the budget's 183. During the conversation, it was relieved that the county was only putting in 50. So 90 and 50 is 140 by my calculations. There's a budget of 183, 487. And then there's, and I don't see, and maybe I'm not seeing it, but I don't see Mr. Breyer's budget in this. So where's the extra 43, 487? And then his is about 84,000. So my, my math isn't adding up, I need you to help me.
Each year, the Commissioners' Court applies for capital credits from the state of Texas. Capital credits are for anyone that are under the COOP that don't receive their, their, their credits for this. It comes in through a state, I believe this last state was around $95,000 that they distributed to the county. And those funds can be and will be used for, one of the main things is for economic development. So the additional funds is coming from the capital credit funds that the Commissioners' Court approves.
But those funds could also be used for other things if the court didn't choose to put them here.
Correct.
So really, technicality, I'll give you, it was kind of a heated discussion, we were in the middle of it. So the county's actually putting in 95,000 in its credit money, $50,000 for the Economic Development General Fund revenue. So the county's really putting in 145,000 in some way, shape, or form into this venture.
And the port was at 98,000, I believe they've increased their contribution to 125.
Who did, the state?
The port, the port.
No, they haven't yet.
Not having yet.
Right, I'm saying, the county, we're using this $95,000
Capital credit, correct.
From the state.
Yes.
Which is not port money.
No.
So that's the county's money that the county can use for whatever those funds are available for. One of the things is economic development.
There are limited uses for the funds, but one of them is, is economic development, yes.
The ones, if you know.
I don't know, don't know offhand right now, but the main one they do say is, is for economic development because it's representing people that, that either moved out or left and didn't take their, their credit from a COOP for electricity that they want to say that you use it for either infrastructure or for capital. I believe infrastructure is one of them, as well as, as, as economic development.
So, and again, just so I'm clear, because just it didn't add up for me, now it does. The county is actually putting in, in, in two forms, $145,000 into this venture. The port is putting in 90.
Currently 90, yes.
At the moment, that's 235. So is, so is the new budget for '21, '22 going up? Or is it staying at the 183, which is?
This was additional contract, it was staying at 183, how originally said, because it was not originally a part of the budget, if I remember correctly.
Okay. And then, as I was looking through this account, trying to do some homework on it, there seems to be a lot of money that's passed through this 1389 account?
Which one's the, 1389 is which one?
9 is this.
The NCDC.
The NCDC. That covers our salaries for the position there, as well as any regular office expenses and irregular expenses. I don't know if there's any pass through that I foresee, I don't remember transferring any funds out of that particular fund.
Okay, so what I've got, and I start at one, three of 20. And it runs through, sorry, let me get to the bottom. It runs through nine of 20, and it shows a million six in and a million six out.
I'll have to research that, that's awful high.
I don't, I don't think, I think that must be wrong. There's no, well, I mean.
I'm going to give it to you, you can look at it.
Yeah, I'll have to research that, because that's, that's awful high for, for that.
Yeah, there's, there's no transactions like that at all there.
Okay, well, no, that's why I'm asking, because that's what I thought, is it didn't add up. So I'd certainly like to know what this is.
Yes, I'll make sure I research that and let you know exactly what.
Dale, just remind everybody, since it's coming up, we have three employees. We have, I'm sorry, two employees. We had Jill Straznick last year as a part-time employee, and we had Holden Hopkins, the deputy. And then we had Mr. Breyer, who does not receive benefits, who had a contract, is that correct?
That's correct.
This year, we've added a, a senior clerk.
Right, so Jill's moving from temporary to a senior clerk.
That's correct.
And, and that, that was part of our budget. And then, just so, that's why I'm just telling you, there's no way a million six, because those are the only things that, that go through there. The other thing that's important to note, Commissioner, is that when we started this particular NCDC, we didn't have an office, right? So there were initial expenses that are one-time expenses. Those are things like a computer, a desk, chairs, what I would call the setup. Those are one-time, and they don't recur at all.
I understand, Judge, I'm just, I'll let Dale look at this and see. And then Jenny, do you happen to know anything about this at all? About, I'm just, I'm just trying to figure out how this, I mean.
No, but if you will email me whatever request you have, then we'll get on it.
Okay.
Right, can you show me what you're looking at? Would you?
Ma'am, it's a.
I know, but would you go ahead and pass it this way, so we can see?
Yeah, I'll make copies.
Okay, well, just pass it to Teresa, so she can make copies right now. Because when we say these things, this is the perfect time to discuss it. I'd love to see where it says 1-6. Let's get copies of it. Do you have a highlighter, so you can see it?
Oh, it's at the bottom, you can see it clearly.
Okay.
It's, it's multi-pages, and you can pass, bring that to everybody in Dale, Teresa, if you don't mind, so he has a copy. And Jenny, please, thank you.
Because there's no way that it's a million six. If there's something that you've read there, let's get that cleared up immediately. Because there's, as I said, only two employees plus the one contract. And so any insinuation that it's more than that needs to be cleared up immediately.
That's why I'm asking Dale, because it's just, it's a report run, and it may be run wrong.
Right, so let's look at that.
Question, I'm not making an accusation, I'm simply asking.
Right, but he doesn't recollect any million dollars or a million six going through there.
I don't know how it could be there, so that's why he can check that out. So again, just to clarify, then, then you've answered my questions on the, oh, no, you didn't. So in, in the, in the 1389 account, right, I'm, I'm looking, I may have caught you off-guard on this one too, but I'm looking at the, the regular categories on here, and I'm not finding, and again, maybe I'm not seeing it right, but I'm not seeing Mr. Breyer's included in the $183,000 budget. So is it 183,000 plus his 84?
That would be for, for budget purposes, if we add this as a continuation of a contract. It was not originally part of the budget, so yes, that'd be added.
Right, so, so this 183, 487, and then he makes, it's really more than seven a month, because every month it's about 7680 for travel, and whatever it is, I think, is the number. So it's well over 90,000, so really, this NCDC 183 plus 90 is more like 273 is what is, is being put into this, unless I'm missing something. Because again, I'm just looking at, this is the special revenue sheet.
Yes.
That I'm not, I'm not understanding where his is in here.
At the time, it was not added, because it was not a, a item that was talked during budget as a continuation. The balances was submitted by Commissioners' Court Administration to, for, for allocation of the, how the budget is set up, and they were working with the NCDC determinant, at that point in time, it was not an item to the budget, so.
Okay, so then my numbers are not adding up again, because I got to go back, right? So I get 145, the 95 from the credits, the 50 from the general fund is 145, okay? You're saying in this 183, the 90 is over here, right?
What 90, I, I'm still trying to figure out what 90 you're talking about.
I'm sorry, Mr. Breyer's 90, or Mr. Breyer's contract, which is not in this 183.
Well, three months of contract is 21,000, it's not 90,000.
But he makes 7600 a month.
Times three.
Right, but he's, but he's made, this is 20, 2020, 2020, 2021 budget. It's not in here either, and he made $90,000.
It'd be part of the estimated actual under, it should be reported, if we paid anything, it should be reported under estimated actuals.
It should be reported under what?
The column that says estimated actuals.
Commissioner Chesney?
Hang on, let me, let me. Dale, let me show this to you.
And again, whatever you're providing, we need to get a copy of everything to publish it to everybody. So after Dale looks at it, let's get Teresa to make copies for us. Right, I know, but it would, it would be good to get it in front of everybody.
Commissioner Chesney?
Hold on, John, I need to get this with Dale.
Are you, okay, yeah, I just have, I want to point out something.
Okay, okay, can you, I don't have it in front of me now, so you can just.
Go ahead and use the mic, or.
Maybe I'm just, I can't find it, and maybe that's what I'm having trouble, that's why I'm asking.
Let's come here, 88,000.
2021 actual?
Estimated actual.
$88,435.
Okay, the actual on that one.
Yeah.
And this is for the budget for 2021? Oh, wait, 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 estimated actual, so the budget was only 23,000, but it went up to 88,000?
That's how much we spent actually, yes.
So how did it go from 23 to 88?
Well, the budget, the budget actual, the actual was based on contracts we received, so.
Okay, so then.
We may have had to change the words at that point in time.
Okay, so then the, the budget for 2021 was 147.
Yes.
And then the budget for 2022 went up to 183.
Yes, because we added additional salary.
For the extra person, right? Okay, so. And so the 183, 487 includes just the three months that we're proposing today. Okay, okay, that, that answers that part, and someone can make a copy of this if they want, but again.
Yeah, and so, and that, and what you're, what you're referring to was part of a budget workshop and part of our budget. Was that, is that accurate, Dale? That sheet has been part of our budget and part of the budget workshop. And so I'm just pointing out that we've all had this document. But it's important to note that last year's budget was, did you say 147?
Yes, 147, 914.
So 90, that the court gave us, plus 50 is 140. So out of the $147,000 budget, 140,000, a delta of 7,000 was fully.
145, actually, because we got 95 in tax credit, 95 in credits, plus 50 is 145, just to be.
Right, but I'm saying to you that the $147,000 budget is covered by our 50, plus the port's 90. 90 plus 50, and then we're delta of 7, is that, do you agree with that statement?
I think so, but that's what I'm trying to get to, then.
Well, let's, let's double-check it, because.
Then where's the 95 of the credits that you said was also going in here? Because that's.
Right, but, but last year, the budget was 147,000 by your own comments right there, is that correct?
You should see the credits at the very top of the, of the report under estimated actuals. Again, you should understand the revenue of the tax credit coming in.
That's, but that's, is that inter-local agreement? Is that the port money, or is that the state credit you're talking about? The port money's 90, I don't see the, is there 95 up there too somewhere that I'm not seeing?
Research that, and it, it may not have been at that time, because the way it was, was brought in and as a transfer from another fund, the, the balances were currently done, so you may see a transfer in for that amount.
Right, I guess what I'm saying, Brent, is that you're trying to get to the bottom of what the budget was last year? And it was $147,000 from Dale's point of view?
No, I'm trying to figure out where all these numbers, the funds are, I know what the budget was.
I know, but what we spent was 147,000, that was the budget, is that correct?
The actual, that, no, actually, the budget was 138.
Right, but what we spent was 147, 914. But 50, you agree, we appropriated, and 90 came in from the port.
I agree.
So that's 145, and we spent 140, I'm sorry, 140, forgive me, and we spent 147. Are you, is there any confusion about that at all, from last year?
Nope, I'm just trying to find out where those credits are.
And then the credits, the credits have not been, they're not, they're not at issue for last year.
But I'm not, right.
Right, for this coming year, we're going to have a different discussion. But for last year, 90 plus 50 is 140, and we spent 147. I just want to make sure we, we set our baseline.
I'm not.
Because you've thrown out a lot of numbers, 1.6, 140, 183, another 95. And, and I want to make sure that we're not confusing anybody, because there's only two, you know, there's only two people that work there for the county, under a county employee status, and then one contractor, and Teresa's here, so she can talk about.
Well, Teresa, you, you might know where that.
Yeah.
Yeah, you might.
Let's see if she can run this through with you, because.
I, I would like to, for someone to go back and look at that.
90,000 has nothing to do with 183, 487, that's separate, that's on the port.
So Dale, on the.
And then, excuse me, one more second. And then the chairman of the port came to tell the court that they're going to, he's going to make a recommendation, and he believes that it will be supported, although he cannot obviously know for sure until the future arrives. But that they're going to take us from 90, and they're recommended to 125.
Well, and that, that's a.
And that's a game changer.
Right, that's something that you, I guess, asked the port for, because that was not something the court ever discussed.
No, that's the NCDC going and working that relationship, and it's also their understanding that, that they, that, that when you show progress, you should be rewarded for that progress.
Okay, so Judge, I'm not, let me go back to Dale, please, if you don't mind, I appreciate it, thank you. So Dale, I'm looking at now that you've got it in front of you, right, the 2021, is it, could it be the other income?
All the information you provide, Commissioner, is a running total of the Department 1389 of all accounts, including your cash accounts, your liability accounts.
I'm back on this page, Dale, my bad. I'll let you digest that one. I'm back on the, the one summary sheet that Teresa just passed out. Oh, maybe, I'll make sure it's the same one. Yeah, the budget sheet. So I'm trying to figure out where those credits are for 21, 2021, or excuse me, 21, 22, so.
For, for 21, 22, we, we had the credits actually going into, into the Family Protection Funds. And if we need the funds, we would transfer them there. So for 21, 20, 2021, we wouldn't, we wouldn't have the credits here. However, we've decided during the budget time to move those capital credits now to this account, which you'll see in the budget of 20, of 21, 22, of 55,000. So for this point, point in time, for the estimated actual, those, those capital credits do not exist.
Okay, so then, okay.
So nobody's, nobody's used them?
Absolutely, that's, that's what I couldn't find, because I don't, there's, it's not here anywhere. And I've looked at this 100 times, and I don't know where it was coming from. So now you've clarified, so now you, you've said basically that those credits aren't going in here, and.
Currently correct.
Not trying to throw anybody in the bus, but a while ago, you said they were going in, and now they're not.
Well, for 21, 22, they are budgeted for it.
But they're not in this budget.
They're not in the 2021, no.
Right, so they're somewhere else, you said they're in the preservation funds.
Family protection.
Family protection funds, okay. So they're not in here at all.
Correct.
So now we know that the, this budget has 125,000 in it from the port, and 55 other, what's the other income?
That is the capital credits, we, we averaging anywhere from 40 to 90, normally it's closer to 85. We wanted to be more conservative, we didn't want to go high level, so we budgeted it at 55.
There are some capital credits going in.
This year.
Right, so, so the county then is putting in 105,000 in one way, shape, or form, and then the port, right, because I'm looking at general, or is that, general fund transfer in, 50, right? And then other income, 55, right?
That's the capital credits.
That's 105, and if the port puts in 125, which is what is on the budget, then that's 220, or.
230.
230, and our budget's 183, so.
So it's, is it just extra? The 55 is cushion, just in case?
Yeah, so why do we, why are we, that's, my next question is, why are we having more revenue than what the budget, budgeted amount is?
And that's something we can definitely qualify for, there's always some, some expenses that might be the case. We've got a contingency fund here on, on their, the Department of 33,002, 36. If you look towards the very bottom. We've got a contingency fund here on, on their, the Department of thirty-three thousand, two thirty-six, if you look towards the very bottom of your page. Uh, we can definitely reduce this to where it's a zero balance fund, however, with being thirteen eighty-nine, there could be a, a chance where, uh, additional funds, as you mentioned, uh, uh, this does not include the contract we're talking about at the moment. So, so that would eat up to thirty-three thousand, two thirty-six, that's part of your contingency.
Right, so if we, well, no, it does include, because you've got, you've got the professional services in here.
It's included.
Right, yeah, you got it in there, it's twenty-three thousand, you got three months of it already in there.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yeah, you can reduce that, it's, it's there for cushion, clearly, but it's not, it's not necessary.
Right, so, and I don't know that that's how we would, well, we need to wait and see what the port does before we do anything, so, but we need to, if you could just put that on your list to revisit it, because as Chairman Zahn said, he thinks it will, but we don't know for sure until they vote on it. So, once that's done, then we probably need to make some adjustments there, because we don't normally, that I know of, we would put this like in a contingency fund, generally contingency fund. We wouldn't have more budgeted than what we plan to expend, other than in a contingency type fund. So if this is a contingency type thing, then that needs to be kind of put on there, so, they're just technical questions, I just, my, I, I kept, couldn't get it all to add up right, and, and it wasn't, the revenue was more than what was budgeted, so I was just trying to figure out why, and you, you've answered those questions. And then I'll give you some time to digest that, Dale, but I, I would just like to know where we're going on that, so.
And also, if you take out the contingencies, and you take out one hundred and eighty-three minus thirty-three, with the fifty thousand that we put in, plus the one twenty-five that's scheduled, you have more than enough to cover the entire budget for the entire year. So if you don't want to have contingency appropriations like we do for every other department, you could, you know, tell Dale, hey, I think you should continue, I think you should, uh, or ask the court to direct Dale to reduce that contingency appropriation. But let's not act like, you know, it's not covered, because it is covered with the two, uh, functions.
I'm not acting like anything, I'm just asking questions because the numbers don't add up to me, so that's all I'm doing is.
No, I'm just, just wondering why we didn't ask these questions for the past three weeks of Dale.
Because Judge, today's, the contract is before us, and so as I'm looking at the contract.
I just thought maybe you'd want to know that, I just thought maybe you'd want to know, that's all.
I'm not acting like anything, I'm asking questions.
All right.
Because today's the contract, and I want to know what it is.
Got it. Right, I just want to make sure, since you floated out a one point six five four million, that Dale answers that. He's referring to the last page of the document that he had printed out, that it says, Nuasis County Development Commission, debit and credit. It's debited one six five four and credited one six five four with a difference of one penny. Is that what you were referring to, when you said there's a million six going in the account? And it shows it here as a complete zeroing out?
Right, but I'm asking why, since.
Why did it do that?
Why did we have one point six million going in through that account and out, based on the budget of this department, which is about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year? The numbers don't add up, but.
But do you see where it says debit and then credit the exact same number, minus one penny?
I, I know how to read these very well.
Well, I'm just wondering.
But I'm saying, how could you, how could you have a, a budgeted?
Well, I don't think that's what this reflects, Dale, can you explain this?
That's why I'm asking what it reflects, because it shows a million six in and a million six out on a department that has a hundred and fifty thousand, now a hundred and eighty thousand dollar budget. That doesn't add up, but there may be a reasonable explanation, and maybe Dale, if he gets a chance to digest it, can provide us that information.
Right, but I don't want you to, you're not insinuating that a million six went in to this account, because it, because it's the same, it's the debit, like on the same day. It's like a, it's like a, a debit and a credit means zero, it means.
Means a million six ran through the account, and a million six came out, that's.
No, it didn't say come out, credited, it looked, it's a credit.
Right, and I'm, so I'm asking, I'm not insinuating anything.
Right.
I've got a report that shows a million six in credits and a million six in debits on a department that has a hundred and fifty thousand dollar budget, now a hundred and eighty. I'm just asking for an explanation.
I agree.
Which is all I've done since the beginning of this debate.
Right, I just want to make sure that, that you recognize that it's been confirmed, that there's, there's only a budget of what's been presented here. This is the budget here on the, the special revenue, and this was provided in our budget book, and as well as our budget workshop.
Okay, yes, Commissioner, I can, I can, uh, uh, address the question you have, because, uh, I don't know who ran the report for you, for you, but they, they include all activity reports, they include all that, all assets, all liabilities, all revenue, all expenses. And double entry accounting requires an entry on both sides of the account, so if you look on, uh, page. Let me count. Around page eight.
Page eight, hang on one second.
You counted page eight?
Hold on.
You'll actually see where the revenue starts.
Six, seven, eight. What am I looking for, I'm sorry, what category?
It's, it's right below, you'll see a thirty, thirty-four, and a forty, thirty-five, those are your, your forty, thirty-five, and forty-four, sixty-seven are your revenue counts. Your revenue from the, the port came in at two-ten, if, if this is going through, uh, one, one of twenty through seven, twenty, twenty-one. Calling two hundred and ten thousand dollars of, of, of revenue coming in, and privately funded from the Ed Rochelle Foundation of seventeen thousand, seven oh five. So those two together would be two hundred and twenty-seven thousand, seven hundred and five thousand, and four, thirty-four dollars worth of revenue. And that's all the revenue we would show coming in, the, whoever wrote, ran this report for you didn't run it to, to just give you revenue and expenses, they should have just gave you revenue and expenses, and you would be able to see the difference between how much revenue and expense was run. They ran the entire department for all activity, and the, the amounts total, both your debits and credits for all activity, for whether it's a, it's a liability, or it's a cash, or it's, it's investments, so that's why you get to one point six million.
And so what in that department would reflect those items?
The only thing that's showing coming in for revenue is the forty, thirty-five, and the forty-four, sixty-seven from January one of twenty twenty through seventh, sixth of twenty twenty-one, of two hundred and ten thousand dollars of, of total revenue coming in, and that's coming from the port.
But I know that, but you're saying this, they ran the, and you went through it fast, that they ran it with assets and all, what kind of assets would be run in this account? That's what I'm trying, I can't understand some of these.
Very first page, one thousand is your cash, uh, next page, thirteen fifty-two, do to, do from, where we put money into our payroll account, or, or to our, our expense clearing account. Thirteen fifty-three is an asset, where we say the same thing, where we actually pay our bills, and you see there's a lot of transactions go through that, we have a, there's accounts receivable, back and forth, we have inventory on the next page, then we have accounts payable. Those are all your assets and liabilities that I'm, I mentioned to you, and every transaction gets hit by those, we have a two thousand and three, which is your accounts payable, purchasing, then we have a, a accrued payroll that we have, and so there's different liabilities and assets throughout this report. Until we get to page eight, like I mentioned to you, where we start actually talking about your revenue and expense.
So, um, and you have to do it today, could you just provide me a list of the specifics on what those assets and liabilities are that run through this, that I can understand that?
Sure.
And why it shows such a high number?
We can.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
And can you do that for three other departments as well, so that we can see apples to apples and oranges to oranges? Because I think that there's, there's definitely value there, so that you can see that one point six is neither reflecting revenue, nor is it reflecting expenses. It's what it's reflecting is the entire asset of how you're running it, so if you're running a particular payroll account, and it has three hundred thousand dollars that run through there, then it's going to reflect in there. And the same thing goes the liability, so I'm about, I bet the lease is a three-year lease, I bet it reflects the entire three years. I bet that it reflects things that have no value here, uh, although it's a good practice to learn. So let's do it for a couple of departments, that you can see that it doesn't, it's not a number that's meaningful in this discussion. Because the number that's meaningful is provided on the special revenue funds, um, that you were provided, which is what the one pager is, on thirteen eighty-nine. This is the one that matters, because it shows you, just like it does on every department, from fifty-one eleven, and moving down to fifty-six, ten on capital outlay. It shows you how we build budgets for departments, so when we say a department, it's not just the salaries, right? There's always lines that are given for office expenses, for telephone and utilities, for professional services, where the twenty-three thousand, by the way, for this contract, is reflected.
And Judge, I mean, Dale, I'll, just when you, I don't need the other three, but if you want two for the judge, that's fine, but just whenever you get this, I'll get with you privately, and.
No problem, I, I, actually, we've already started our annual financial report, uh, balancing, and, because we're coming up to the end of September, as I was talking about. I've already can run a, a, a transaction of every department of Fund thirteen, that goes to assets and liabilities, revenue expenses, if you so choose.
Right.
I appreciate it, just let me know, let me know when you've got the specific list, and I'll get with you on this.
Right, I just want to make triple sure that people don't, are not left with the impression that the budget is any more than what's reflected in our budget book, which is a hundred and eighty-three thousand, which includes this contract. Which is covered by the amounts, um, if you take off the contingencies, which I think we could, in order to achieve what would be known as a, uh, net neutral balanced budget. So if you want to remove contingencies such that the new budget is a hundred and seventy-five thousand, which reflects the, um, the port's one twenty-five, uh, contingent upon approval, plus our fifty. I think that would be a fine motion, so that you could accurately reflect one seventy-five equals one seventy-five.
Well, it's one eighty-three is the.
Right, but we can change that by changing the contingencies.
Well, but I think we should wait till the port votes, is all I was trying to say on that, because until they vote, make it official, quick, you know.
Well, that's why it's in there.
We probably put that number in there for the port a little too premature, but that's, I mean, hopefully it'll work, I mean, I'm sure it will, but, um, I, I don't need to make a motion, other than if, if the port's money comes through, then we need to revisit it, bring it back to the court. When it's, I don't think it's posted today on this, this is Mr. Breyer's thing, I was just asking questions, so, I, I'm happy, once the port votes theirs, to bring it back and look at doing this as a, you know, reducing the, the credits, so that the credits can be used somewhere else, or can be put into contingency. So that it doesn't have a two hundred and five thousand dollar revenue stream on a hundred and eighty-three thousand dollar budget, whatever the case may be.
And, and of course, you understand that was done, because the fiscal years don't match up, which is why Commissioner, uh, Zahn, I mean Chairman Zahn came in, is to make certain that there was a comfort factor. Knowing that our fiscal years don't match up, it's unfortunate, but it just doesn't, the, we're September, we're October one, and they're January one. And so that's why that, um, contingency appropriations is placed there, is in order to make that, uh, available. But we do know, at minimum, they would restore, let's say you didn't get that, let's just pretend for a moment, you didn't get the uptick, and you stayed at ninety. Ninety and fifty is still a hundred and forty, and if you subtract the thirty-three thousand on contingencies, you still have more than enough to cover that which we were already approved in budget, um, for the twenty-three thousand, to get us to the end of the year. So that we may continue with the current, um, development of the projects that we're currently working on, including, um, the one that's incredibly valuable to the, to the month, which is the Corps of Engineers' October meeting.
You know, Judge, Judge, and Commissioner Chesney, I might, I say one thing, you brought something up, and I sure understand why you brought it up, uh, but just to clarify anything, uh, the way I looked at this, uh, I don't charge any travel or anything else. Now, uh, so there's not, uh, there doesn't need to be any thought about what an additional travel would cost for me, uh, that, that's on me.
Commissioner Gonzalez.
Yeah, but the ninety thousand, the port puts out, that's not included in the one eighty-three, four, seven, eighty-seven, right? I mean.
Yes, it is, sir.
It is?
Yes, it is.
What do you, I don't see.
It's one twenty-five now, you see at the very top where it says interlocal government agreements? That, that one twenty-five, that represents the port. That's what the chairman came and said his recommendation will be.
But that's for the contract with Mr. Breyer.
No, sir, the contract for Mr. Breyer is listed under professional services, five three zero zero, at twenty-three thousand, forty dollars. The one twenty-five represents their investment.
So that's the one that's, was eighty-eight, eighty-eight, four thirty-five?
Um, say that again?
That's the one that was eighty-eight, four thirty-five, professional services?
That was the cost, doing it in twenty twenty-one.
That was last year.
Twenty twenty-one, not sure.
That was last year.
And you're saying this year's gonna be twenty-three oh four?
That's correct.
Correct.
Oh, forty?
That's correct.
Meaning that's gonna terminate after three months?
That's correct.
That's no longer gonna be in place.
That, that's correct, we have, the budget was approved, understanding what was contemplated, uh, by contract, by employee salary, as well as, um, the interlocal agreements, plus what we have in there. And the contingency comes from, uh, the opportunity to deal with contingencies, although I agree with you, there's no need to have the contingencies higher than we, higher than we need at this point. It can just stay in that reserve fund, which it will, uh, but again, I think the accounting was very transparent during the budget, I mean, this hasn't changed, right? This is the same. So that one twenty, the reason you don't see ninety, Commissioner, is because it's one twenty-five now, at the top.
Last year's, you showed ninety last year?
That's correct, and the reason it's one twenty-five is there was no, um, ability during COVID to host those fundraisers that they said they were going to do, and to try to, you know, be a part of. And so unfortunately, COVID hurt a lot of opportunities, but we think that in the future, we'll be able to do that, but the port's recognizing that, and understanding that there's been a lot of value given, and so that's the new recommendation.
Okay, now, the lease with that, that off, is there, is it paid off, is it already paid off, or what?
No, it's a, it's a monthly lease.
Who's paying for the lease?
Well, it's part of the budget.
Other services in charge.
Other services, what number is that one? Fifty-four, ten, sir.
Yeah, I got it, right here.
Right, the foundation gave us some dollars to work with, so that we would have the ability to keep to our budget. Again, this is, this is an opportunity to provide for economic development and live by the budget that we created. And again, I don't, I'm not certain, you know, why the reports get run the way they ran, that made you concerned, but it's, it's certainly not, it's not, it's not the reality. The reality is the budget's one eighty-three, with thirty-three thousand of which is just extra, so really, if you, if you take that off, it's a hundred and fifty thousand, of which we have more than a hundred and fifty thousand coming. Even if you went back down to, you know, less than one twenty-five. And that's with adding the additional person to go from temporary to full-time, which was approved during budget, so that's where we got that uptick.
Excuse me, Judge.
Yes.
Breyer says he doesn't charge for his expen, his expenses, his salary is seven thousand, six hundred and eighty. Some of the consultants that I've seen here, they get paid either four thousand or three thousand, and it's either three thousand expenses, which comes out almost to the same thing.
Right, I think that, I, I'm not sure what the question is, but if, if you're saying he doesn't charge for expenses, I agree with you, that's what he said.
Well, yes, that's what I'm saying, and other consultants that we've talked to, uh, I believe like Mr. Duran, gets paid what, four thousand a month and three thousand dollars expenses? Or it's either three thousand a month and four thousand dollars expenses, which comes out to almost the same thing at seven thousand dollars a month.
Right, so I don't think that, I think everybody that does work has a different scope of work, I, I mean, I know that, I understand what you're saying, I, I just don't see the, I, I don't know what, what, if you're saying that we have one price for, for people who do outside, uh, work for us by contract, that's not the case. It's always based on the scope of work, and what they're doing, and what the profession calls for, right? That, that's, that's what it's based on, it's not, you can't really say, we pay a certain amount to contracts, because it, they're all so different, there's, there's no set amount that the county has.
Yeah, I understand.
That, that's all I was saying. It's based on what the marketplace, you know, has for somebody who does economic development. At any rate, the, the, um, the opportunity is to be able to, again, our budget was set contemplating the professional contracts and services for twenty-three thousand, and that's what we're bringing to you today. When we set a budget, and we pass the budget, we basically bring you back the contracts that adhere to that budget, and that's what this is, that's what I wanted to make certain that you understand, is that.
So then, can someone, I guess since he didn't, it's seven thousand a month, but then every charge is seventy-six, eighty, he said he doesn't charge expenses, so what's the six eighty extra for? Just since he's, I thought that was expenses, but he's saying he doesn't charge travel time, is that for like hotels or something, or?
That's just the monthly rate.
I'm sorry?
That's just the monthly rate, seven thousand.
That's just the monthly rate.
I thought the monthly rate was seven thousand a month.
It's seven thousand, six hundred and eighty.
We don't need expenses, what a weird number, oh, so it was just ninety thousand divided by twelve?
That's correct, that's how that works.
Got it.
Just the math comes up with another, another, not, not perfectly even number. At any rate, like I said, this is within the budget that we created and we passed as a court, although I realize, um, we bring you to this moment so that we can, you know, finalize that. But if there are any other questions for Mr. Breyer, I'll move on.
Is the, is the purpose to not, to renew only through the end of the year?
That's correct.
And then no more renewals?
That's correct. Well, I mean, I don't know what the will of the court is. The purpose of right now is through December. That was what the budget called for, and that's what we all understood was available. So it was just to get us to the end of the year, and then next year, it would not be available because it's not provided in the budget. But if it's the court's will to bring it as an agenda item, we could certainly entertain that. But that's not in the budget, as you can see. Again, I.
Motion that we, uh, approve the supplemental agreement with John Breyer.
Okay, I'll second that motion. And, um, all those in favor, if they're, wait, I'm sorry, are there any other questions?
Yeah, another question.
Go ahead.
I just have a statement here. I'm just, again, I'm, I'm, like we did last time, I'm looking for, where can we start cutting back to? Again, this is an area that I brought up during the budget time that I recommended that probably the, um, the NC, EDC would need to be eliminated and go, go back to the regional, uh, EDC as we were before. Unless, we're still with them, I don't know if we're still with them or not, I haven't seen anything, heard anything. But, um, you know, we, 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 if I run it around about two-hundred thousand dollars that we could be saving here, you know, and, and put it somewhere else that we really need it, because I know we're gonna be crunching some numbers, uh, so about, if I'm, I'm, I'm at the point and I say, well, I need to start cutting somewhere because I voted for that, right? So, um, I'm just thinking, you know, that if we can save two-hundred thousand dollars more, we need to save two-hundred thousand dollars more, uh, put it somewhere else, you know, whether we need to, where we're gonna need it and for the, um, employees or put it for the other, some other project that we have that we're gonna need some money. And, um, but, um, but like, right now, we're not talking about the end of the EDC, we're just talking about Mr. Breyer and, you know, and as far as the, uh, the monies from the port and maybe we can utilize those money somewhere else, you know, besides just, uh, Mr. Breyer. Because I know the money that really goes to Mr. Breyer, that contract to supplement his. And then we see, we have a department head that I've never, never seen, maybe one time only. And I don't know what, what the existence of the department head is and never come over here, never seen him, except for the one time he was introduced and maybe he should give us some reports, you know, once in a while. I don't know, uh, what his, what his job is or what his duties are, but, uh, I didn't think Mr. Breyer was gonna, gonna train him to, to take over and, um, so now we got.
Uh, Commissioner.
Working in another full-time position now, so.
Commissioner, I just want to point out that, just so that you can make certain that you have, sounds like you already have your, your thoughts, but just to be clear, fifty thousand is the only amount that we put in. So you can't save that which you, if, if you don't have an NCDC, you're not gonna get any dollars from the port for an NCDC. So the fifty thousand is what you would save under your theory of the case. In other words, your theory of the case is that you would like to save money, that's fifty thousand dollars that we're putting in. Your theory is already proven true. We are saving money as the contract only goes through December, and therefore there's a huge reduction. And this budget is in our budget already. So the budget is created, it was approved in court. I, I do want you to know that.
Yeah, fifty thousand.
The fifty thousand is what we put in for economic development. And a county that does not invest in economic development is a county that is cer, certainly on, um, you know, does not value economic development. The R E D C is a regional economic development. That means that it is going to promote a region, not a county. And in fact, they do so without bias or prejudice, and so therefore they have no obligation and no allegiance and no, no, I mean, they do, where they, they go for the region, which is great. But that, and, and we do participate, just so you're clear, we do participate in the regional economic development. We only have one seat on there. I sit on that and I, I've attended every meeting. In addition.
Haven't heard anything from him in a long time, so I just know where we're at.
Right, well, they, they, they do, they do make their, uh, uh, Ian Basie was here within the last quarter. He did give a formal presentation on the EDC. Holden Hopkins has been here many times, and he actually was here during Budget Workshop, and he also gave a full presentation, comprehensive for his work throughout the year and even showed you the website that we had created. Uh, also, you're invited to every single meeting, uh, every single month. I don't believe you've ever attended, but you are invited.
I have.
Okay, so you've attended a few, so that's good. So you know him and you also know that he's been leading the facilitation of the Bob Hall Peer Committee as well, uh, along with many other initiatives that we've already spoken about today.
That was just my, I mean, I just, I just wanted to make that point that.
No, I, I know. I just want to make sure that you're using the right numbers. The only thing we would save is fifty thousand dollars and we would have no Oasis County economic development.
The port would not give us ninety thousand to use it somewhere else, or what?
Well, the ports, first of all, you have to understand the nature of the giving. The nature of the giving comes from the Promotional and Development Fund, and that is given to EDCs and chambers of commerce. So that is correct. You would have to invent a new reason for the port, a new, uh, concept or scope. They give to economic development corporations. They give to the Robstown Area Development Corporation. They give to the Robstown Industrial Development Corporation. They give to the San Patricio Economic Development Corporation. They give to the United Chamber of Commerce, et cetera. So yes, sir, I'm saying that they would, they are giving to economic development corporations. That's what this money is earmarked for. It's not just for a random use. It's for the specific purpose of fostering those types of businesses that would bring a quality of place so that when they go out and promote the, you know, hundred thousand direct and indirect jobs that are associated with the port, that there's somebody that works in those companies that knows that we are dedicated to economic development as well. That's why they give it. That's, I know because I sat on that committee and, and that's how, that's the philosophy. It comes from a very specific fund called PND.
Thank you, Judge.
Excuse me, Judge.
Yes, sir.
Where, where I'm getting, excuse me, where I'm getting discouraged is, uh, the last time Commissioner Chesney was, uh, asking for help to help fund his project, uh, I understood that we didn't have any money at all to give him, okay? And I offered to give him fifty thousand dollars, okay? So my concern is we need to put our monies in our projects, and there's no assurance that this is gonna be Mr. Breyer's last contract. So, um, you know, if we're, if we're taking a vote now.
Commissioner.
Since y'all already made the motion.
No, we're not, sir. The way it works is I have to call the vote, but you'll have your opportunity, but just.
Okay, we'll call the vote then.
Yes, sir, I, I, I see that one of the things that's, that's happening to our court is, uh, there's just a, a real confusion as to when you said Commissioner Chesney's project. This project, this contract is a budgeted item and you voted for the budget. And so this was a prepared, um, you had lots and lots of workshops, we had lots and lots of opportunities.
At the time, Judge, I didn't realize that we didn't have any money for ourselves.
Well, just so you know, it's about choices. Commissioner Chesney has plenty of money in his account. He's choosing to ask for help. It's not that he doesn't have the funds to put forth his project, is that he wanted us to recognize that his project is a countywide, uh, project that we should all take an investment in, which we did.
Well, I was willing.
So the idea of we don't have any money is not accurate. This budget has the dollars to support that which will continue economic development.
Well, I, I understood you yourself made it sound like we didn't have any money.
No, I said that he needs our help. In other words, you have to find it from your special revenue. Your twenty-sixteen COs should have already been spent. So the point was is that it needs to come from the right source. And again, if you, if you want to offer your dollars from your twenty-sixteen, that's magnanimous of you, and I think he said he would appreciate that next go-round.
Well, like I said, I mean, from the way I understood it, there was no money in the budget to help him, and that's why I said what I said and.
Well, that's because the budget is balanced, it's got its balance. What we have are opportunities because of certificates of obligation. You have money in your COs, and so does Commissioner Chesney. So that was the issue, you have money. And he has money, but he said he would like to save some of those dollars for projects, including roads. And so he was looking for those members of the commission to assist. And we also have seventy million dollars worth of American Relief Plan Act, ten million of which we have obligated already. So the idea, sir, was not that we didn't have money, it was choosing the right, the right bucket of, of dollars.
Well, that's, that's the way I took it, you know.
Oh, I know, I'm sorry that you took it that way because as it is, you said you offered fifty thousand, so you've proven that you have plenty of money.
Yes, I, I mean, I try to spend my money wisely, Judge, where it really needs to be spent.
Right, so the point is, is that this budget is a balanced budget. And, and that's all there, that's all that the concept was, was just to showcase that the contract that's before you today reflects the budget that you voted for. Making certain that we get the items. Otherwise, why go through the budget process if you're not gonna fulfill that which is inside our budget? And also, your comment about there's no assurances, there's every assurance. If it, if it gets extended beyond December, it's only because this court wills it, that's all.
Your Honor, I just, uh, ran the, the balances for thirteen eighty-nine. It's, it was a question showing the total assets, total liabilities, fund equity, revenue expense for this fiscal year. I provide that to you at the moment. So you show you the total assets, cash and bank currently negative fifty-nine thousand, our accounts receivable fifty-four thousand, and inventory currently supplies of fifty, sixty-four, ninety-two, negative, uh, five thousand. We haven't done any transfers to this fund, so that's why it's a small negative. That's why your current reserves is, is a negative. You'll see our revenue is the current, current, current revenue at the moment is money coming in from the port of one hundred and eight thousand, and this is the capital credits we received, the sixty-five, thirteen, that's are now being applied here. And now you show you your total balance of expenses of one eighty-seven, forty-seven, oh, one for this period of time, which is covers almost to the end of this fiscal year. So that's where our balances sit currently at the moment for, for, uh, thirteen eighty-nine in Oasis County Development Commission.
Yeah.
Judge, I.
Yes, sir.
I know everyone's had a chance to speak and I hadn't really spoke on this issue, so, um, you know, my biggest, uh, concern with anything and, and I think, you know, it seems like, you know, majority of the court really, uh, wants to make sure that we understand and function as a, as a county to, uh, reduce what we can to, to make it more manageable for the county and for the taxpayers, and I get that. Uh, and, and I think we're gonna have this discussion and, and with every time a contract comes up. And I think it's healthy and, and, and it, it shows community that we're just not gonna rubber stamp anything. But for me, uh, the work that's been done on, you know, we hear sometimes to talk about return on investment. And, uh, the, the amount of money we have put in from the county and the other sources, right, from the port, uh, the return on the investment, there, there's no way that we could ever match the return that we've gotten. The fact that we have a company called Amazon, the largest company in the world, come to Oasis County, was the only reason why it came, was because of the NCDC. You can make an argument that it would have been the Regional Economic Development Corporation, and they're great, but their scope is so much bigger. We've seen that on projects that have been lost, that have gone to our, our neighbors. Every time you create a bubble, it gets smaller for everyone's interest. That's why there is, uh, the R A D C, right, for Robstown. Uh, even they feel that the Oasis County bubble is too broad for them, that they want something that's specific to focus on their area. And so, um, to me, just in that one project alone, is worth the, the investment to put in, uh, this year. But like I said, I, I, I hear my colleagues and what they're saying. Uh, I think it's a, a very reasonable request to look at all these, uh, contracts we have come before us. Uh, but I, I think in this one today that I don't know if we would have had that come had we not had an NCDC in existence, along with the way that it's set up. Uh, I know that our discussion when this first was created, Mr. Breyer was, was brought in on a contract basis, uh, before we even had Holden, um, was to help set this up. And the reason why we were able to get Holden is only because it was an assistant director position because we could not pay for a, um, full-time executive, and we were able to do that through the funding that we, that we have basically in existence now. Uh, I hope that we do get to that point with the NCDC. Um, I, I think Holden has, has grasped, grasped well. Uh, my worry is that eventually he'll go off to bigger and better things. But for as long as we can keep him here in his home county, you know, I'd like to see, you know, Holden's role continue to expand and for him to have that opportunity one day to be able to run the NCDC. And I know that's what, what John has been doing all this time, is kind of grooming him for that as well. Uh, but I, I, I think that, that the time is waning on, on that issue. I hope that the majority of the court supports this because, um, the fifty thousand dollar investment we put in with the remainder from the port, um, really paid dividends for Amazon to come and, and gosh, who knows what else will be on its way. We know there's some companies that haven't been named yet. But that, I think, is just one of many achievements that we can take pride in, that they've done good work, but that, um, I think at least values their, their ask for today and gets us through the end of the year. And then I hope that we can look at how to readjust, uh, in the new year. And, um, I'll, I'll be supporting this because I think that that one alone, that one project alone made a big difference and really put us on the map and getting more attention from other companies coming or, you know, that are on their way. Thank you.
Yeah, I just wanted to point out that if you take, just, and I know that we don't have, uh, a chief appraisers appraisal yet because we're not, we're not quite, although if you pass by the, the new Amazon facility, you can see a lot of work taking place. But we don't know the, the appraised value. But if you, um, just take, um, the, I guess, okay, on the low side, fifty million dollars, that divided by a hundred times thirty cents, our valuation is a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. You know, um, it's a real opportunity, um, to, to really understand that you've got to let people finish what they've started. We, we developed a budget so that we could transition in January. And I would ask that we allow this December transition to take place because A, it makes sense, and B, it would allow for the good work that we're doing, particularly in the month of October, on some of the things that you've known about, like the sediment incident management plan. I just, I wish that during the budget time, you would have expressed yourself because again, we've got a real need to finish some projects so that we can transition. That includes the university, it includes, um, it includes the Amazon, it includes, uh, and that's working with R I S D on their educational components, with the Last Mile Network that John's been working on. And it really focuses on the Corps of Engineers' October meeting, which is quite frankly, for the whole purposes of beach renouragement. There is nobody else that has that expertise at this moment. And for that reason, I would suggest that we already have, um, saved the county a lot of money because that's reflected in the budget. And I would ask that you please consider letting this stand because it's a short term. It allows for the work to finish and to transition, and it pays huge dividends. It already paid for itself, and that's what's important. And that, that's just in one year. I mean, that's, that's just one small project. And there's at least three named projects that John's under disclosure agreements, not to reveal their names, but there are wonderful projects on the horizon. So I, again, the budget was, was thoughtfully put forth, and this was included, and there is plenty of dollars in that budget. Uh, if you feel more comfortable, uh, we could address the contingency in an upcoming agenda item. And we could also address anything else in this, in this, uh, uh, issue like the family protection, uh, dollars. But again, I mean, it seems like a county that wants to grow and keep property taxes low might consider putting some investment in economic development where it's already proven value. Um, I hope that, that that really helps. But I would ask you to look at the budget and to see that the budget is appropriate. But I would ask you to look at the budget and to see that the budget is appropriate and it contemplates just getting us to finish the work to December so we can move to a transition in January. And that will be a huge savings.
Judge, I just wanted to jump in, render my opinion on this. Just as I indicated in the past discussion on contracts, some I agree on, some I don't. This is just not one that I agree on with you, and I'm going to tell you why. I do think Mr. Brier's done a nice job. The intent when we did this, and I remember these meetings very clearly, was to bring him in for a year or, and I'm sorry, I don't remember if this is the first year or the second year of his contract, I can't remember. But it was to bring him in for a period of time to get it set up and to go. And I think he's done that. We've got a director now in Holden. We've got a full-time assistant over there that's recently been hired. We've got a nice board in place. And I think it's just sometimes you got, it's time to cut the cord. And in my opinion, it's time to cut the cord. I would certainly consider letting him go through the end of October, just so that it was a real hardcore, okay, this is the hardcore stop, train Holden, make sure he's got everything that he can in that period of time and move on. But I think, I just, I feel like this one, it's time to cut the cord on and move forward. I do think this county invests money in economic development in different ways, whether it's through the Flowerboth Business Association or the Padre Allen Business Association or the Portage Chamber or the Regional Economic Development Corporation or the Robstown Economic Development Corporation, the money that we put into the EDC here and other things that each commissioner does with their outside agency funds, that if you add those things up, it adds to a significant amount of money that we put into economic development. I think this is a very pro-development commissioner's court. I think some of the policies that we passed also help encourage, because it's not all, to me, it's not all about money. It's all about, it's about setting policies that make it a business-friendly community. I think we've done that. I think we tried to streamline how things work. I think the county engineer works real hard to listen to all of us, to say, look, when a developer wants to come in, as long as they meet the standards, please get them developed quick so we can start seeing revenue from those house tops. So I do, I think we are very progressive in the way of economic development. And it's just on this one, it's, like I say, I don't think, I think Mr. Brier's done a nice job. I think he's done his year. I think he's got it set up. That was the intent, was never for him to be here for a long period of time. We've got a lot of people working on a lot of things, some of the mentioned things that he mentioned. I think you could argue that Steve Bonner's working on. I think that you could argue that Tim Richardson works on. I think you could argue Reed Clay works on. I think you could argue the other lobbyists, whether they choose to or not to take their contracts, work on. At some point, in my opinion, you just have to, you just got to cut the cord on one. And this is just one I feel like cutting the cord on. You know, I.
Right, so we just disagree then on over sixty days. Because if you're willing to go through the end of October, the cutting of the cord, as you said, for me, was the end of December.
Right.
Because that really does get us through some of the projects that are midstream. We're already, I think, gosh, it's next week, no, this weekend begins October one. That's really just thirty days to wrap up and to transition. I asked the court for December. If that's not amenable, then it's not amenable. If you would provide me the opportunity just to take the record vote of December.
Yes, ma'am.
Then you could come back. And if that does not prove valued, again, I would just ask that we consider the rate of, again, sometimes you wonder what it is that you're saving and what it is that you're losing. And in this case, I think we lose a lot by not having the person take us to the end of the year. That's just, as I say, one perspective. At this time, having had ample discussion, and we certainly appreciate all discussion that we have had, let me do it as is, all right? And that is, the motion was made by Commissioner Modis and seconded by myself. And all those in favor signify by saying aye. This would take us through the end of December. Aye.
Aye.
No.
Okay. I've got three nays. And so I would ask Commissioner that you honor your word and allow us to go through the end of October.
Happy to do that, Judge. I would make a motion that we extend the contract for thirty days, with that being the last and final contract, Mr. Brier, and with the focus being at getting Holden and his staff up to speed as much as one can in the remaining forty days. And that would be my motion on that, at the same rate that we're currently.
And I've got a motion and a second for that. And all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Okay, John, you've heard the will of the court and we'll work with you to get the contract appropriately, as was the directive. Everyone's kind of nodding their heads here. And then later, not today, because we're going to be busy today, but we'll work on that transition. And I know your love for this community is great, and I know that the work that you have put forth is incredibly valued. And I bet it's not the last that we see of you, even post-October, as far as just your commitment to our community.
And Judge, I just want to echo that. I appreciate that. And if I didn't, I wouldn't have extended it even for thirty days. I know it wasn't what was requested, but if I didn't feel like there was value, I wouldn't have even extended it for thirty days. So I think there has been value, and I appreciate Mr. Brier's work. And on behalf of Nueces County, thank you very much.
Thank you. Very kind. Let's move on, if you guys don't mind, okay? We're going to move to item number three. And this is the supplemental agreement with Susan Roth for engineering services relating to our drainage master planning and related matters. And I'm also going to have, sorry, Teresa, I know you just dropped that, but I'm going to have Teresa come up also and kind of go over the dollars and cents here. But on this one, this one is unique because just to remind everybody, Susan's contract is the match for in-kind service. In other words, we use her contract, well, excuse me, it's eight thousand dollars more than the match of in-kind service. But the grant that we were awarded has both a cash requirement and an in-kind service. So in order to fulfill our October twenty-ninth Texas Water Development Board grant, Susan's contract meets that parameter. So I just want to make sure that everybody understands, this is not like other contracts. This one is valuable for two reasons. A, Susan's expertise, for one thing. But second, it's the fulfillment of our grant requirement. This is how we wrote our grant. This is how it was accepted. We need to provide this in-kind service. I will suggest to the court, it's not exactly even. So that means a hundred thousand of the hundred and eight thousand dollar contract would be our in-kind. So if there is concern about that eight thousand, I myself will make the motion to ask Susan to please reduce it so it's a perfect even hundred thousand of her contract that would be applied one hundred percent to that in-kind. And so with that, Teresa, will you share with us the funding source on that?
GOMESA.
Okay.
The offshore leasing Federal Reserve funds, Department thirteen oh seven.
So this one does not impact our general fund at all?
That is correct.
And the GOMESA, for those folks at home don't know, that's the Gulf of Mexico supplemental, those are the dollars that come from federal statute that allow for certain Gulf states, five to be exact, Texas being one of them, to receive revenue, both directly to counties and to our general land office, from federal offshore leasing of oil and gas royalties.
I'd like to have the questions of the county attorney before going any further. I was going to ask for table on this one here. I got a copy of the GOMESA. And it sits here on number one, the proposed funding allegations. Allegations. It says, no more than three percent of the total amount received by the state can be used on planning assistance and administrative costs pertaining to distribution GOMESA funds under this program. So would that be going above the three percent?
Commissioner, for an issue like that, you'd have to submit that to us in writing beforehand so that we can actually do the research and give you, you know, good work.
Sure.
I can't do that on the fly.
That's what I always thought, maybe we could table it.
Can I ask Dale to please tell us what our total GOMESA allocation is? And then you could do a three percent.
The last we received, I believe, was around seven hundred thousand dollars. And before that was over a million, so we probably got two or three million in the account.
My question was really more, how does this qualify? GOMESA is for mainly coastal restoration, and that's, there's more things than that, but mainly coastal restoration. So I think Susan's done a great job, but I'm just trying to figure out how this qualifies.
GOMESA has a clause on there that covers both, as you mentioned, restoration as well as drainage and other, and wet waterland areas. So drainage is one of the key items that it's allowed.
No matter where it is in the county?
Correct.
That's correct. In fact, it's always been a myth because GOMESA has been used by the coastal areas so often, but it's really meant to be a countywide application, particularly for drainage. And that's why it was a suitable, but whether or not that's the bucket that you wish to have, draw from, what I want to focus everybody's attention on is that I do believe that this is absolutely, time is of the essence, because our contract needs to be complete by October twenty-ninth to the state.
So tell me, I'm sorry, I think you were still talking. I'm sorry. Go ahead. Apologies.
You know, we just hired a young man, LJ, that probably has the same qualifications that Susan Ross has, maybe more, I don't know. He also belongs to the Water Development Board Committee, region-wide, that he's an officer and that. So, and he's got the experience for that. So wouldn't he be our inside person to work with the Water Development Board or to be part of the grant that we, you know, to make sure the grant goes through?
So he would have to work forty hours a week on that grant? First of all, I don't think he makes a hundred thousand dollars a year. I'd have to double-check that. But we need a hundred thousand dollars worth of in-kind service. And I believe that Mr. Francis was hired to be a engineer, he's a mechanical engineer with an environmental background, and he's an excellent engineer. I know him from water regional planning boards. But Susan actually sits on the Nueces River Authority Regional Planning Board, and she also sits on the State of Texas's Water Development Board. So having said that, LJ would be great to be able to have an internal person who knows how to work with our experts. But having said that, again, the one hundred thousand dollar in-kind service is needed for this grant, Commissioner. And that's why her contract pays for itself, because we have to do it one way or another. And I think that we would like to have LJ be, quite frankly, available for all kinds of engineering opportunities, not just this one focus. So I think he's an asset to our county. And when you have, let's see, a hundred and fifty million dollars worth of projects like we've got in the field, he's really going to be coming in handy. But, again, this contract satisfies our in-kind service, and we need to fulfill that grant by October twenty-ninth. And I do believe that Dale has answered your question regarding whether or not GOMESA qualifications have been met. It's math problem, not really a legal one, although you're welcome to ask a legal question. But it's very clear that drainage is one of the clear statutory permissive uses for GOMESA.
Excuse me, Judge. It's a hundred thousand dollars a year, right?
That's correct, a year. A hundred, it's really, her contract's a hundred and eight, but the in-kind service is the hundred.
And this contract's for three years, right?
I believe it's one year, sir. I need to double-check that. It's one year.
It's an extension.
It's one year.
supplemental agreement, sorry.
Thought it was going to last till the twenty twenty-three. Sorry about that, if I was wrong.
That's okay. It's one year. I'm getting the confirmation here, Commissioner. It's one year. Yes. If you don't mind, you'll have to take the mic because of what's happening with our virtual. Again, the eight thousand dollars is definitely over, and I am willing to ask Susan, I hate to put her on the spot, but I'm willing to ask her to make that go down to a hundred so it's even Steven, a hundred of in-kind for a hundred thousand dollar contract so that we can go get our money that we've been waiting on and get to that drainage process. That's what we said was the most important. Go ahead.
The total for services is ninety-six thousand dollars.
Oh, okay.
There's twelve thousand for travel, reimbursable cost. So if we're trying to do the even one hundred K, we would just move the four K up to services.
All right. All right, well, that would be my recommendation, only to make certain that everybody understands that that contract satisfies that in-kind service requirement and that I fully expect, just so you know, Susan's here and she can outline it, but Susan knows our new engineer, Mr. Francis, very well because she worked with him when he was with the city of Corpus Christi and he was on a board for the city. When he left the city, he's no longer on that board. But Susan has been representing us on all of the statewide and all of the regional flood drainage projects. Drainage has been identified as our number one issue. This gets us to satisfy the main core requirement, other than the cash. We also have a cash commitment, everyone, and that's also shared with our tri-county partners, Jim Wells and Clayberg. Yes, sir. Michael?
Yeah, I just wanted to just inform the court that we do have two bids currently on the street for the master drainage projects. I'm sorry. We have two bids on the street for the master drainage projects, one for the countywide and one that includes Drainage District Number Two. And Susan Roth is.
You mean tri-countywide, right?
Tri-county.
Tri-county.
Yeah. Susan Roth is the one that assisted us in getting those items drafted and approved for publication. And we're scheduled to open those bids on the twenty-ninth.
Right. And also, our Texas A&amp;M Kingsville piece of our grant and all of that, those in-kind services would be coordinated with Susan, who's already, like I said, has a two-year head start. But the most important thing to note here is not, even though she is uber-qualified and that she's been with us this whole time to get us the grant that we would have not gotten but for her, the most important thing to note is that this contract satisfies a key element of our grant. And therefore, I can't imagine under what scenario, what stars, because she will have to work forty hours a week on this project to make that hundred thousand in one year. This is what's needed to get us the two-point-seven million. By the way, when we got into a situation where.
I think that's an important note.
Yeah.
That it's an hourly rate up to ninety-six thousand.
That's correct.
Not to exceed. And obviously, the court would have the opportunity to review all of Susan's hours, and I have no question of Susan's integrity. So don't let me, don't let anything I say imply anything, but just to reassure that the court would have the opportunity to look at that on a regular basis to ensure that, because five hundred and nineteen hours is, you know, is something that can be easily achieved based on this kind of study. But I do think it's important to note that it is an hourly rate, not to exceed. Now, my question on this was also, would she, under this, is there a program, is it program management that she would be doing or is she going to be the engineer on the project?
No, Susan, let me refer to Susan on this, so I don't speak for her. Susan, would you mind unmuting?
In other words, we don't have to have, in other words, my point was, I'm not trying to.
Yeah, she's not an engineer on the project, but let me let her speak.
We don't have to have Susan Anne Lan, for example, because she would be the program manager.
That's correct. Susan.
I'm making sure I'm right.
You are right.
Okay.
Yes, and Commissioners, Judge, thank you so much for the opportunity to visit with you all today. And, you know, Commissioner Chesney, you bring up a really good question. And the way, at least my role would be program management, and I would be managing the engineering consultant team as well as for the overall tri-county study, as well as making sure, just I want to say, the consultant team that's selected by the Drainage District Number Two, that all of, I want to say, all of those components, that everything is, how to say, I'm tracking schedule, budget, making sure everyone is doing what they need to be doing, especially to satisfy the requirements from Texas Water Development Board for this type of study. And I have put together, as Michael had mentioned, for the RFQ, of course, the RFQ that's out on the streets, the two right now are for qualifications-based only for these engineering teams. But I also want to share, I've put together a very detailed engineering scope of work. As y'all know, I'm an engineer, even though I, how to say, I put together these grant applications only through Texas Water Development Board. As y'all know, I've been doing this for over twenty years, as far as with these types of projects. I have over twenty-five years of experience as an engineer. But, and so it's, I want to say, in the detailed scope of work, task one, I have thirteen tasks. I have 13 tasks that I've laid out. And it follows how Texas Water Development Board likes these types of regional studies to be conducted. So I followed their, how I say, recommended format on previous studies that I've done for them, even though this is a new program. And I think that's what really helped our application rank high, um, or one, one of the items. But Task One focuses on program management. And then there's a number of additional tasks as far as developing the hydrologic, hydrology models, um, doing a benefit cost analysis, prioritizing CIP projects from the recommendations that come out of the study. We have 18 months, based on the application that I put forth. And that's what gave us some additional points as well. We have 18 months to conduct this study. And so we have to be able to provide Texas Water Development Board a draft report in 18 months, starting here, beginning, you know, beginning in November. And then their staff reviews it, provides us review comments, and then we have to get those all addressed, again, the engineering team. But I'll be overseeing, reviewing their work, making sure that, how I say, that we're following everything according to Water Development Board. And I'll also be, um, handling the administration of this component as well. Um, just being able to, uh, withdraw funds for reimbursement through our escrow account. As y'all may not know, um, this grant, and real quick, I hope y'all got my one-page summary, um, that just kind of gives you a recap. Uh, you know, a lot has been going on over this past, what, a good year and a half, as far as with our whole, how I say, um, submission of our initial abridged application. And then we did our final full application last year. And then through the whole process, um, the Drainage District Number Two and the City of Driscoll both withdrew their applications, joined forces with us. And by increasing the scope of work, by, um, absorbing their, um, detailed, how I say, project components, that's increased our overall project budget from 2.25 million now to 2.7 million. Um, I was very glad to be able to negotiate an additional $450,000 grant from Texas Water Development Board without any of the counties having to add any more in-kind or cash. Um, the one-page summary kind of gives you a breakdown of everybody's in-kind and cash component that makes up this 2.7 million dollar overall project. Our grant total now is 2,137,500. Those grant funds are placed in escrow. So it's not like the county just gets, how I say, their check from Water Development Board, you know, to move forward. So you have to make sure you follow the, the guidelines and the reporting requirements, um, specifically for Water Development Board in order to withdraw those funds.
Yes, that's a great, um, recap. And again, I do want to point out that there's a lot of moving parts to this. When we absorb the City of Driscoll, just making sure that that gets adhered to is absolutely critical. In addition, you've got to have somebody who understands the Water Development Board requirements. Again, this is a full-time job administering this particular, uh, grant. And we want to do it right, because following this grant will hopefully be appropriated dollars by the legislature to do the projects that result from this grant. We're already working towards that effort as well. Um, if it had not been for Susan, we would not have gotten that additional $400,000. And again, there was no extra match required. That took months and months of work. Again, it is a key component of our grant to produce the in-kind service. There is no way that we could do this internally at all, in my opinion. But we are lucky to have somebody internally who will understand it. And that's a great, that's a great thing. So we got lucky. We got a new hire that will, amidst all the other grid projects he'll be working on, he will be able to really be, uh, somebody that you can lay us on with, Susan, inside the county. And that's a, that's a big asset. That's something we didn't have a year ago.
And one other thing, just to share, Judge, um, as y'all know a little bit about my background, just to kind of, how I say, reiterate a little bit. I've done over a dozen of these types of projects where I have numerous entities, stakeholders, multi-counties. Been doing this for 20 years. Um, I first learned how to do all of this when I was at the Lower Colorado River Authority, um, back in 2001. And so it, I want to say, it's, every project takes a couple of years to go through the whole process and complete it. So it's, um, like I say, I've been working all around the state. And this is kind of, how I say, this is my specialty. This is what I do. So, and I would love to, like I say, love to continue working with you guys to kind of help y'all get to the finish line of this.
Yeah, thank you, Susan, and-
I got a couple of questions.
Okay. Let me ask Commissioner Gonzalez to ask you a few questions, Susan.
Sure.
Uh, just, I'm looking at the, uh, Task One B1, uh, number seven. Uh, what, what is that? Is that, is that hiring somebody else besides you, or what?
I'm so sorry, Commissioner. I didn't catch-
Number seven?
Task number seven. We're getting some feedback.
From Task One B1, uh-
Uh, task number seven.
Is develop RFQ and RFP for potential regional drainage O&amp;M program.
Oh, I, yes. Um, thank you for bringing that up. And I, again, I, it kind of, want to say, goes back to what Commissioner Chesney had mentioned. My contract is, um, you know, an hourly rate, not to exceed amount. And so what that, um, what that item was is based on, just as y'all know, in a lot of y'all's precincts, people are really wanting to see, that, see something happen right away. And of course, we're gonna be in the planning stage. A lot of these folks need culverts dr- you know, cleaned out. They need, they need basically O&amp;M maintenance in their area. And so the judge and I, we had a really nice lunch with the other two county judges. Gosh, that was back on July 16th. And so as we've kind of been working together, and Judge, please chime in, I just feel like we've really developed a great partnership with our, with the other two counties, with Jim Wells and Clayberg. And so it's just one of those things where we were looking at, the judge and I were starting to visit, um, because of just some of the funding that each of the counties have, maybe we could also look at a potential, this is, I mean, it, it hasn't been put together, but maybe do some sort of potential regional O&amp;M project together and pool our money together. And, um, and it would be through ARP, I think, is what we were, or kind of initial discussions. And again, it's just, it was an extra item. I just wanted to include it on all the different types of services.
I'm sorry, be through who?
Um, if needed.
In other words-
Be through who, did you say?
ARP, the American Relief Plan Act. If, if the county decided to invest in operations and maintenance contract countywide, we would absolutely use Susan to figure out how to write that RFP in order to do that. In other words, that was something that was suggested in our forums from Dee- from, really, quite frankly, countywide. All of the mayors, all of the jurisdictions believe that one of our major problems is that we don't even, we don't even have a strong maintenance program for what we've got. Even though what we have is inadequate to deal with, uh, Mother Nature's extreme weather events, it would be a good start, a good Band-Aid to start cleaning. I think you agree, because last court, County Roads 67 and 69 and their culverts were, uh, we had an interlocal with DD2 to do that very thing. What if that was able to be done countywide? And if you were to do that, you would have to write for that. One of the reasons we have done so well is because we are now using experts to write for us, so that you don't, you don't get a scope of work that's not good. Or that gets changed and requires more dollars. Um, that's what that's all about. If we, if the court decides to do that in the future, you could count on Susan to make certain that she, uh, could help us in that endeavor by writing the correct scope.
But this is something the court would design, our court only, or with the other, with the other two entities also?
No, just with ours. Just Nuasis County would be operation and maintenance. But we've talked to the other judges. Everybody recognizes that we're all in the same boat. Nobody's had the dollars to deal with drainage. However, American Relief Plan Act changes that for all counties. That's been one of the discussions in the forums that we've been having. With DD2 in particular.
And then, no, Susan, my last, uh, maybe, hopefully not, maybe not. My last question, another question would be, since this is according to what I hear, you're, you and the judge saying is that it's a full-time job, 40 hours a week. Um, so I don't know if you have any other clients, you know, that you'd be able to work with? Or do you, is it gonna be, uh, full-time with the county only, or?
I think what the judge said was, she'd have to work 40 hours a week to spend $100,000, which I think is what she said, but-
But she doesn't, and she don't get $100,000?
Right. So the, the-
It's up to-
Yeah. What I, what I like about the contract is it's, it's only up to a certain amount. And she has to send us a bill, and we have to get to review that bill. So just, no, I'm not trying to speak for you, Judge, if that's incorrect.
I understand when, when you said full-time, you know, work, I thought it was like-
It kind of sounded like that, but I think, well.
I'll let Susan answer that. She knows what's, what she's gonna be having to, to do here. Susan, the question really has to do with, you know, when you have an up-to-contract, I'm certain that it's gonna be dependent on what, how we start. Week one might have 40 hours worth of work. Week two might have 10. But what is your, what is, how, how do you gauge it? Do you think that you will be working quite a bit with Nuasis County on this drainage plan? Um, how does it scope, how does it fare with other clients and other projects that you have?
You know, that's an excellent question. And even just to kind of quickly circle back to what Commissioner Chesney had brought up. Yes, when I submit an invoice, um, you know, it's interesting. I think every engineer is a little bit different, you know, on how they, um, structure their invoices. But specifically, if I can stop, for my invoices, because it's tied to Texas Water Development Board, I give a very detailed invoice. And I show, like, how many hours I have spent, on what days, what tasks. I mean, I give a very, how I say, detailed account of the work I've done for you all, especially because Water Development Board is going to be looking at that. Um, as I submit a reimbursement request, so that we can be reimbursed through the escrow account, I have to show that detail anyway. Um, and so that's just one item I wanted to share. But yes, you know what? My invoice, based on my hourly rate, I have roughly about 40 hours a month for the next year to spend on this project. I'll be honest, I will be using probably all 40 every month. Some months are a little more than others, so that's what I've kind of noticed. Like, especially at the beginning, been working really closely to make sure as these engineering teams get selected, getting them on board, making sure that they have the correct scope of work as they, um, negotiate with you guys. And, um, and we get their contracts in place. That'll take a little bit of time. We need to have a project kickoff meeting, as y'all know, town hall for, you know, for the public. This project requires five, we will have five project meetings, town halls, throughout the process. So there's, I want to say, there's a number of items. I'm gonna be making sure that, how I say, just as they're moving forward and we get started, we've got to do data collection, for example. I have a number of the stakeholders that I'll be interacting with and helping to make sure we get the correct data for our consultant team. And then, of course, when we start the, um, infield site survey, some of that work before the actual field survey gets out there, just as far as making sure that we have the correct number of structures, um, where we're gonna be doing, conducting our cross-sections, because we've got 255 stream miles of detailed survey, field survey, that we're gonna be doing. Um, and then we have over 100 of limited detail. And of course, our whole study area is over 1,000, um, square miles. So I mean, we have a really large, we have four HUPTENS that comprise the whole Baffin, you know, three of them are, they, um, comprise the Baffin Bay watershed. One of them is for the South Corpus Christi watershed. Uh, we're gonna be coordinating, of course, with the, you know, with the, um, the Naval Air Station. They've already reached out to us as far as how our project encompasses their area and the type of detailed, uh, modeling that we're gonna be doing for their area. I'm gonna be coordinating with Texas A&amp;M Kingsville with, um, they've already been working closely with Dr. Jennifer Ren, her graduate students. It's so wonderful for, um, Kingsville, for, I'm sorry, for Clayberg, for their 25,000 of in-kind service. A lot of that's gonna be met through the graduate students at Texas A&amp;M Kingsville. Uh, so I'll be working with them. Of course, we have to make sure we get the survey. We're gonna have a number of items that are gonna be going on, um, in parallel, just so that we can meet this 18-month period. It sounds like it's a lot of time. It's not. I'll be honest. I, like I say, I have done over a dozen of these studies where I've had, gosh, I've had, I did one for Falls Hill, Limestone, and McLennan Counties. That's around Waco area. Gosh, we had 27 key stakeholders that we were entities, uh, water districts we were working with. I mean, again, it's just, the, when you're on a, on kind of this large scale of type of project, it, there's a lot of moving pieces, a lot of components. Um, anyhow, so I, I hope that helps. I don't know if y'all have other questions, or?
Thank you. Let me ask. Um, okay. I don't see any other, um, questions, uh, at this time, um, from anybody. Michael, you're standing. I don't know if you want to say something else.
I, I got interrupted, but I waited-
Go ahead.
For y'all to give back to me. Um, one more thing I just wanted to point out is, uh, when we placed, when, uh, the court approved the orders for me to put these items out for bid, the court also indicated in that order that Susan Roth was gonna be advising the committee, uh, in reviewing, uh-
Right.
The qualifications that come in, uh, on that selection process. I just want to make sure that y'all are aware of that fact. And also, um, that, um, if I, just want to put my two cents in here. Uh, without Susan's help, this would be darn near impossible for my office to write the bids and follow all the procedures that are necessary for this. We have to have an expert, uh, to guide us through these processes, and so-
There's always a hitch with free money, isn't it?
Hey, uh, Michael, so since you brought it up, I'm gonna consider it germane enough to bring up on those, um, contracts that are out. I know I sent an email back, I don't know about the rest of the court, saying those are pretty important. Um, uh, studies and, or, um, sorry, contracts.
Are you talking about the RFQ?
Yes, that we, that we have out about having more involvement and not doing-
Commissioner, can we talk about that one in executive?
Was that on exec?
Well, it's not part of this particular contract. And, and I'm concerned, because we have an active, um, RFQ on the street on it.
No, no, I mean, it was just about selection committee that we want to be involved in.
I know.
I want to be more involved in a, in a, I think it should be more people involved in the selection committee than normal, that it should just come to court and, um, be discussed and let people from the other counties be involved in that, if, if, you know, if that's appropriate. That was all, I was just gonna reinforce.
Right. And I, I don't mind addressing that in executive session, because we have addressed that with the other counties. And so it's not like they haven't been a part of that. They have. They've already consented and signed off to this particular format. To do anything different would, quite frankly, set us back. We have an October 29th deadline. So I just want you to know, the other counties have consented already to the format that we've put forth. And that's really important, but it's really not germane to this particular item. And that's my concern that we-
Mostly for CIPs, Michael, too, you know.
I think any, I don't know, I think anything you talk about with Susan's contract, it's all related to this. So I, I would disagree that it's germane, because I think we're talking about Susan's contract. That's all I'm saying. I just, I want, I would like the process, if, if the other counties do not want to be involved, then, and, or have consented, great. But I just, that's a, those are big, big deals that affect all of us. And I think that should just go to the court for selection and not go to selection and back to us. And we miss, we miss, we just don't get to hear it quite as much as we-
Right.
Do on the selection basis. That, that's all I was saying.
But just so you know, you do have the opportunity to go down to procurement and review all data. You just can't do it otherwise. No, it's not, because it violates the Open Meetings Act. We would have to post.
Right.
And therefore, you wouldn't be able to reveal, the scores would, would be then available.
We would be the committee. We would be part of the committee.
Yeah, the scores are, they get revealed.
That's why I said it is, can we just talk about it in executive session? Why don't we put it on the next agenda, if you'd like, and we can talk about it? There, there are legal issues that, that rev- revolve around this. And I thought we had addressed those, but if they come up again, let's- And I thought we had addressed those, but if they come up again, let's, let's definitely address that through Michael and Jenny. Uh, we do have an active, we're not allowed to discuss this while it's out on the street.
But we're not discussing, but we're not discussing.
I know, I just want to be very careful. That's all.
We're not, I am no way, dish, shape, or form discussing the merits. I have no concern. I don't have anybody I want. I don't real, all I'm saying is I want to be a bigger part of the process and I'd like the court to be the bigger part of the process.
Right.
I'm putting that on record. I'm letting it, that's, I'm only one person, but I'm letting you know, Michael, so that you.
I've, I've supplied a written response to this, um, and, uh, county attorney has it. And so I would, I think I would defer to her to let y'all, let her give y'all that advice based upon.
Yeah, let's do that. Let's do that.
Excuse me, Mike. When you referred to experts, uh, dealing with this project, aren't our engineers considered experts? LJ, Juan Pimentel?
Are you talking about the county engineer?
I'm talking about, you said Susan Ross would bring in her expertise to this project.
Correct.
I'm saying, I'm asking, you couldn't refer to Juan Pimentel or LJ as experts that they could also?
I don't know who LJ is.
He's our new engineer hired by Juan Pimentel. He's a well-experienced, the judge said, well-experienced in.
That's right. It's just that he's never done anything, we do not have the expertise uh, with regards to the Water Development Board cri- um, criteria and requirements the way Miss, Miss Roth has that. So I would say Juan has never had a Water Development Board grant, and LJ has good background with, um, the state's Flood Drainage Program Advisory Board.
And Water Development Board.
And Water Development Board, but, but again, we need a hundred thousand dollars worth of in-kind services to meet our grant. This is what this contract does. It's also what our grant contemplated. It, this is how we put forth the grant. We said, we're going to do this so that we can meet this key element of our grant. So it's not that they're not knowledgeable, is that, no, they do not have the expertise of twenty years. Not to date Susan or I, but I mean, yes, she has a lot more expertise with these types of tri-county or multiple-county, multiple-stakeholder drainage studies. And nobody has done that here at the county before.
But there's no reason that LJ couldn't be involved in.
No, he should be. He should be. But again, he's, right, but he's.
And add him to it.
Well, he, he's a good liaison, but again, he, I hope will help. Remember, that position has been vacant for over a year and a half. That was the one that was occupied by DePac and it would be nice to have a mechanical engineer in the house. And while he has the environmental engineering experience, given that we're doing so much mechanical, new boilers, new air handlers, new roads, new, um, um, generators, this is his, this is where a lot of his time will be spent. We have a hundred million dollar campaign out in the streets. Um, that's, that's the point.
The appropriate thing would really be to include, to, to include Public Works and Juan because it's his department.
He's in it already.
He should be able to assign the person however he wants, right? So I, I would.
Juan, Juan is on the selection committee already. He's on, he's on every construction project selection committee.
Very involved in the whole Susan Roth contract.
Just so you know, he is. And, and the other thing is, just to make sure that everybody's on the same page. I realize that there is a different sense now, but this court approved the process for everything that we're doing. And we approved it, but like, you know, I just want you to know that this was an open and transparent process that we, the court, approved. So what Michael has been, uh, facilitating is the court's will over the last few months. We approved it months ago and he's facilitating that. And again, um, that's, that's what is important. That's why we met with the judges in July. Is that this court gave us direction. We met with those judges. We got their will. And we've been operating with the RFQ under that, uh, ability, what, what, what the court ruled on.
Well, I just think people can sometimes change the way they want to operate and that's all I'm suggesting. But you said, let's wait till executive session. So if you.
Yeah, if you don't mind.
Well, I, that's why I stopped talking, but you brought it back up. So I'm happy to wait and see what Jenny says, but I just think this is really important stuff and I want to be more involved in the process and I'd like the court to be. And if that's legal, great. If it's not, then we'll hear that from Jenny.
Okay.
Judge, I would also add that Juan in Public Works reviews all the invoices that come in.
That's correct.
I can't.
Right, I think she's saying that Juan reviews all the invoices.
He does, or you're saying?
He does. He does. All the invoices. Right. They work, they've, they've worked from the beginning, two years ago, they, in the words, this office is, this is a liaison type thing, but again, a core element of the grant is to get this contract so that we can produce the hundred thousand dollars of in-kind service.
Judge, I would make the motion that we approve Susan's contract, um, and just as, in part of the contract that, that Public Works continue to be involved as much as they want to be and in regards to reviewing bills and anything else they want to do, I would just make that part of the motion.
All right, I'll take that as a motion and I've got a.
Second.
Second. And all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, um, we're going to move on to item, um, uh, num, I'm, four and five, if you'll recall from the previous courts, need to go to executive session. So I'm going to move on to item, uh, number six, seven and eight. And is there any, this was kind of a carryover, Jenny. Uh, is there any update for number six at this point or does it need to be tabled to the twentieth?
Uh, Judge, I can't.
I'm sorry, the eighteenth.
I can report that as I was directed to do, I did have a conversation with ABM and they are working on putting a proposal together for us. I do know, I do not know the content exactly of what each little part of the job will be, but I do know that they categorized it as HVAC at the fairgrounds.
Okay, can I table that till the eighteenth?
Absolutely.
Okay. I'll table that. I've got a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Okay, item number seven is the ratifying the agreement with Stone Water Properties. And this is for a suite one hundred containing thirteen thousand square feet. It was on the last one.
We wrote that one last time?
I thought it was, but I think we held on it.
That's what we didn't do.
We didn't do this one.
Right.
It was, it was listed, but not, were not voted.
It was on the consent agenda before.
That's correct. So is there a motion to ratify this agreement? They're already in the, in the building. Okay, I've got a motion and, um, a second. And all those, is there any discussion for this?
Judge, just same discussion before. I don't, I don't, uh, I, I think this is a good concept, but again, I, I don't believe this is qualifies as emergency powers. I did, um, asked the attorney, county attorney on this and she stated to me that she does not vet these for emergency powers. She only vets these for legal sufficiency. If that's incorrect, Jenny, please correct me. So I, 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 I think we've got to get some clarification from someone on what emergency powers are. I don't, I don't feel like this should have gone through emergency powers. And Jenny, if I'm wrong, please correct me.
Yes. First off, yes, does she, uh, does the judge have the power to do a thing? Yes, we do look at that and right now, um, we are still under the impression that she has that power. You have asked and we've been asked to make sure that we are operating under the correct thought process. And so we're looking at that to make sure that the more extended types of purchases qualify under that exigent circumstances.
Right. And, and I believe what was stated in court was that you vet all these for emergency powers. Are you vetting these for whether the emergency powers are appropriate in every contract? Or are you vetting these for legal sufficiency of the contract or both?
Legal sufficiency, yes. We have been working under the impression that the powers do exist still. However, be, having been asked to reexamine that issue, we are in the process of reexamining the issue.
I know they still exist. I'm asking, do you advise the county judge on whether or not the action she has taken or taking is viable under the emergency powers or not?
That is not a question that is asked of us.
So you haven't advised her on whether what she's doing is valid or not valid? You just, you've said the powers are in place and you've said the contract is legally sufficient, but you've rendered no opinion to the county judge in regards to whether or not the action is, is, is appropriate under the emergency powers?
There may have been a prior opinion.
Sorry, on this one.
On each one, no.
Okay. Thank you. So.
But on this particular one, we worked together, my office of emergency management, with the county attorney. And if there had been an issue, I would expect that the county attorney, being the county attorney, would have raised it. So I'm asking that this one please be ratified so that we can, quite frankly, move forward with this particular contract.
Does this, does this function?
No, I just want to say that it's, it's an important contract. Um, when we executed it, we, we don't get a lot of advanced opportunities to, uh, when, when CDC changes their guidance or guidelines, the concept was to move quickly so that we could. It's not like you just walk into a building. It has to be properly vetted and properly set up for safety under COVID nineteen to do the work. If there is an opportunity to bring something to you, we certainly do. But in this case, it is a documented function under emergency management to provide the vaccines, particularly these boosters. And the, it wasn't the booster on this one. It was the third, um, shot, what we call the third dose for the immunocompromised for our regional area. This is something that we believe is a part of emergency management under the declared disaster. It's brought to the county attorney. And while I appreciate you wanting to continue to vet these concepts, let's be clear. If I'm trying to do something that's not valid, one might consider that if the county attorney is helping you do it, that you have the right and ability to do it.
But that's not what she's saying, Judge.
No, she just said it, that they're operating under the premise, ability to do it, which is what this is.
But she's not, but she also just said she hasn't advised you on that. So you, you can't use the county attorney in this, in this particular instance. I just asked her, did she advise you on this particular contract? And she said she was not asked and she did not advise you on that. So if the county attorney is, wants to correct me, that's fine, but it's not fair to use the county attorney on this unless you've asked her to vet it.
I think, I think you're the one that's using the county attorney, but I, I totally appreciate you wanting to vet it. What I'm asking you is for this one. This one was vetted with the county attorney. I go to her and say, just so you know, in emergency operations, she sits with us. She's part of our section chief, um, I think there's twenty-five of us, okay? And there are different roles for each one of us. If I'm going to take up a situation to assist public health in the declared emergency, I say, hey, we need to rent this space. I approve this space being rented under the declared disaster. Please facilitate that. If she thinks there's a problem with that, she's going to come to me and tell me. That's implied, Brent.
But no, it's not, Judge, and I don't think it's fair to imply.
Kent, I'm told by Belinda that Kent did address that specific issue. Kent has not texted me that, but he, uh, I'm told, um, that he addressed that specific issue. I was unaware of that.
Addressed how? I don't know what that means.
That I had the power to do it, that it fell under the disaster. I'll look it up here. Let me just do. All I'm saying to you is that I appreciate your position, but I would just like for somebody to ratify a, 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 an agreement, if you don't have any problem with doing this work in public health. Why not just ratify it so that you can help your county recover these dollars?
Because this is not the first, the second, the third.
That's right, because we, because you have a philosophical.
The ninth or tenth time.
That's right, because the, the disaster continues, Brent.
Because you, this is not the first, or the tenth time, you've brought this in and used that same argument, even though you say you appreciate my position in wanting to vet it, you say you appreciate it, but then you don't bring these.
Well, I did vet it. Let me get you the copy of the, of the attorney.
You said you appreciate my position, but you don't allow the court to weigh in on something because it's a process. And, and I, 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 I would like, and we've already asked this, I would like to get an attorney general's opinion or someone's opinion because these orders were supposed to be reasonable and signing up.
No, they're supposed to not, they're supposed to be more than reasonable, Brent. More than reasonable.
I just want to finish. And so I just want someone with, with respect. Because there's, I've seen no advisories in two years on what the emergency powers can and can't do. I've brought this up repeatedly that I believe there are things that fall in emergency powers and I don't bother you on, and that's about eighty percent of the stuff. And there's about twenty percent of the stuff, and I may be under or over on my percentages that I don't believe are under emergency powers. I don't believe that if asked to a court of law or attorney general, that they would be doing so. And leasing a space, when we could have come and had this discussion, it's the principle. I, I probably would have probably.
And I would just ask to have the remainder of the conversation in, in executive, if that's possible. Or at least the next portion.
I don't know what to do. It's on the con, it's on here and she's, I, I, I'm trying to tell you what my position is. I don't think it's, you can win on the legal legalities, but I'm saying I don't.
Mind if I find the oper, you want to just bring it back later so I can get you a copy of Kent's? If, if I have a lawyer from the county attorney's office that did advise me that it was, uh, failed, fell within my ability, wouldn't that weigh in your decision?
It would weigh.
So give us a second to find that. Let me bring it back later.
It would not be equivocal, but it would weigh. And, and, and I'm, what I'm saying to you is, I, I, I don't, I'd like to know why. In other words, in other words, I need something that just says you can do it. I want someone to explain to me why signing a lease that could have come to the court wouldn't be, would be, because it's for emergency, emergency use, and there was like three meetings in September. My God, we've been here the entire month of September, that this could have been vetted and let the court weigh in on it.
Because we were trying, because, because Brent, there are good explanations for that, but the problem is, is that you can't be a little bit pregnant. You know, you say you have no problem with eighty percent of the things that we do for emergency, for emergency powers.
I don't know.
I know, but you said it. You said you don't have a problem with eighty percent of the emergency powers.
And I said, don't hold me to that number.
Pick and choose. And what I want to, I just want you to know that under, the, the, under a declared disaster, what we do is not debate what's needed for the, for the disaster or for the emergency. Even like today, today's a great day. It feels like our cases are low. I tell you, the emergency continues. What we do today affects us tomorrow. And so even though it makes you uncomfortable, the, the powers come with the declared disaster. So that, those decisions that we make for the disaster, for the emergency, are necessary to be done so that the public health and safety can be taken care of. They're not supposed to be up for debate because of that exact issue. You, you bring up an awesome point. You want to debate the lease. That's the problem. In an emergency in which we're under, you're not supposed to debate it because you're supposed to act for the best interest of public health, in this case, because it's a public health disaster. If it's a hurricane, it's something else.
I've, I mean, I thought we, I've already said if, if, if the attorney can give me a reason.
Okay, give us a second, then if you don't mind.
Can we just move on to the other one?
Let's do it. Let's move on.
Who's providing the services? Out to the county or the?
It's city, county, public health.
So, because I, I talked to him and they said, this is really not, we could have waited.
Who did you speak to?
Never mind what I spoke to, but.
Well, the problem is you, you have to bring good information.
I spoke to somebody, Judge.
Okay.
This was another emergency, you know, that it could have waited. And the problem here, it says lease, but I think we're going to rent, right, instead of lease?
It's the same thing.
It should be rent. No, it's not the same thing. Lease is whole, whole year lease and if you get out, you pay. You know, rent is a month to month where you can get out anytime you want to with thirty days' notice. So that's the difference.
Okay, I know that's the difference that you think, but that's not accurate.
So they, uh, they're trying to get the approval for rent, but they could have waited till they got the approval back.
Okay, I, I will tell you that I work with the incident commander and she was the one that requested this. There's only one person I take orders from in emergency management. She's higher on the totem pole. That's Annette. She's the incident commander and she asked for this. So our goal in emergency management, Commissioner, is to give our commander what they need, the resources they need to deal with the emergency. So I don't know who you spoke to, but you did not speak to the incident commander about this.
What did I tell you? I did.
Well, I promise you that, uh, she asked for this and I have a copy.
But she said also waiting for an answer.
Well.
Could wait for the answer to come back.
Okay, I, I will tell you that we responded to the need and that's the answer. And if you want to debate that with me, let's have that conversation with Annette in a different forum, but you're just. Well, it sounds like you just did.
But I'm just telling you that I, that I spoke.
I'm happy to have her come here and talk about it, but she doesn't appreciate being put in the middle.
And I would, I would either.
Well, then let's not do it then, since you just did it.
And you don't believe me, I guess.
No, I don't. Because I'm, I'm, I'm here to help save lives as the emergency manager. So when the incident command, no, I think that what we're here to do is to find fault with people who are trying to save lives. That's what I think. Annette asked for a resource. Emergency management gave it to her.
Have a commissioner score that we need to use, Judge, and not only.
Okay, but unfortunately, the disaster is what it is. And we cannot be debating what we need in public health. If the incident commander needs a person, if she needs a thing, if she needs a service, or if she needs a space, we need to be able to get it for her to, to work with this emergency.
They're going to pay for it. They got the money. They got eighteen million dollars.
Okay, obviously you don't know much about the eighteen million because the eighteen million is primarily ninety percent for personnel. I know because we helped write that grant. I think you just have ideas, but you don't have the facts, unfortunately, to back it up. I want to help you get those facts, but no, the eighteen million was not. Let me remind you what the funding source is. It's money we already have and applied for. On behalf of the county, as the emergency manager, we applied for money, we got that money. It's specifically for vaccines, therefore, that money is here, and that's why it's the best bucket of money to use. That's why it comes through the county, Commissioner Gonzalez, the 18 million, excuse me, Commissioner Chesley, be right with you, just give me one more minute, sir, I know, okay, I tell you what, you can't, go ahead.
I was just gonna give you what you want, so, I, I've read what the county, what the county attorney sent you. Um, I don't agree with it, but, but based on that, I, I will agree to ratify this because the county attorney gave you permission, and quite frankly, respectfully, county attorney told me she didn't, and now she didn't know that he did, so I don't mean to throw you under the bus either, but I, I asked these questions in advance to come in here and try to be prepared, and then I, I need the, the right answers, so I, I'm gonna vote to ratify this, but I'm still gonna argue, I'm gonna argue that I don't agree with the county attorney's logic on this, respectfully, and I would like something from the attorney general, and we need guidance on this. I, I've been begging for this forever, so if we're gonna ha, I would like to, before we do this, I would like to make a motion that we ask the AG for an opinion on this issue.
Before you do that, Commissioner, I would really like to talk to the court as a whole in executive session before you make an official motion like that.
But I, I just, I gotta get guidance on this somehow.
I understand, I understand, and I think she does too, so we'll bring that back, but let's go ahead and, and move this forward. Item number seven is ratifying the agreement. I don't remember, Kara, did I do a motion yet for a, yes, a motion and a second, thank you. Right, so it's just now, all those in favor signify by saying aye, aye. Okay, opposed, same sign.
And, and again, for the record, I would just like to state, I'm, I'm ratifying this based on the county attorney's giving the judge the okay to do it, but I still do not believe that's the proper way to do it.
Was it?
No.
Your no, but I didn't, okay, so one, nay.
Thank you. All right, um, on item number eight, it's a buy board contract, kind of leftover, this is another one of those leftovers. It was re, um, noticed for Protech to do HVAC repairs at the fairgrounds. This was, if you'll recall, Juan's recommendation to do this contract with Protech at a cost of $200,000, two L, maybe it was two, two five, two, two six, yeah, 226,000. And again, um, they're not here, but you'll recall the, the background, uh, Michael's got more specifics on the bid itself. It's for three units representing the kitchen and the office area. I don't have the specs on the tonnage right now, but I can look it up, uh, Michael, do you?
Yeah, I just, I don't have those specs on me, but I, I just wanted to mention that, uh, this is presented from Juan's office, and they did reference that, uh, that this vendor has a buy board contract, and we checked out the contract, it is valid and in force, and it would meet the competitive bidding requirements of the purchasing act, should the court approve it.
And, and this is one where I gotta get some clarification from you also, Jenny, because if, if, to me, we had to table this one too, because ABM is trying to put together a proposal, I'm assuming they're trying to cover everything in the HVAC, and at the moment, and I don't know this, but at the moment, I get that their assessment is higher than this assessment, but if we went back to them and said, okay, we want this in for this price with everything else, with everything else, so all I'm asking to do is table this until we.
Can you take that as a motion?
Yeah.
Okay, motion and a second, and all those in favor signify by saying aye, aye, opposed, same sign? Yeah, till the 18th.
Yes.
And, um, again, uh, the next one, um, oh, no, this was a new one, uh, Dale, this is a new one, this is budget change order 21 to include fund 14 for the fairgrounds and the sale of assets. Can you talk to us?
Also pulled from the, uh, last, uh, last court, because the, I have the item of number eight in as part of, as part of this amendment. We can definitely amend this to exclude that if you so choose, or if not, we would, we'd need to table.
Let's just exclude it, so you can get everything else appropriated.
An amendment on the budget change order by removing the 455,001 eighty from the, uh, sale of assets.
Excuse me, Judge, the budget change order was already.
Okay, so we did that, we did it for I day.
Can you get a mic, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm here.
No, it is, it's already, uh.
I'm sorry, I can't hear everybody talking.
Budget change order was already approved, this item was pulled because of the agenda item.
Yeah. This item was pulled, so I don't think it was voted on.
No, 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 it was.
So it was voted on. Hold on, just one person speak, Kara, would you please tell them?
Yes, it was voted on, and then it was brought up for reconsideration, and that one, the 400, it was pulled from.
Right.
And the rest was approved, so it's already been approved.
That is correct, the way I remember it as well. So the 400 has not been approved, because, because we're still having some in limbo, but the rest of it was approved, Dale.
Correct.
That's my recollection.
There's no action needed on this item.
Or just table, till the 18th?
We've already done it.
Do you want, no.
That item needs to be tabled till the 18th.
Table this one to October.
I'll make the motion to table till the 18th, and I'll look for the second.
Second.
And all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, let's move to human resources, and then I'll move us to executive session, and we'll tackle everything else that we have not done. Julie's here, this is the position of Commissioner's Court Manager. You should have had a copy given to you of the job description, and let me see if I can find mine. I may wanna ask for an extra one, I thought I had it here, but.
It's attached to the agenda.
What's that, it's attached to the agenda, okay, I'll grab it. If anybody has any paper towels, I accidentally spilled some tea here, if anyone could, yeah, could I borrow this? Okay, thanks. And, um, so let's just start the discussion, Commissioner Chesley, you brought this to, you wanted to look at the verbiage. Do you like this current verbiage?
Uh, I had some, quite a few suggested changes, um, they deal.
Did you send them back to Julie?
No, Julie and I played phone tag, it was my fault.
Will you just let her know what they are right now?
Basically, they're, they are, uh, adding supervisory language to me, um, the, the, um, job description was not clear that this particular person would supervise all the non-elected department heads, and so it was just adding back, not, not just, that's the main one, just adding back some supervisory language to, to firm that up, I can certainly, I mean, tell you what I did, but I didn't, I'm not stuck on my particular way, um, and then on the, so that was one, I don't know how you wanna do it, one at a time, do you wanna, or, how do you wanna, that, that's my main, that was the main one on here, and then I've got two or three other ones to talk about.
Um, the only thing we wanted to say about that is if we do it, just recognize that we have to change all job descriptions from all department heads. Not that that's a problem, just wanna make the court aware that the, all job descriptions for department heads would have to be changed, because they currently report to the court, and we would have to come to court and change all of those, just FYI.
And, and the thought there was on an organizational chart, report to, you know, you've seen the organizational charts where reports to this person and then like a dotted line, you know, so that there's still ability for the, you know, the, the department heads to deal with the court, but just from a reporting standpoint, but yes, that, that's certainly, as one person to the court, that's fine with me. Um, uh, and then on the service primary contact for legislative cons, consultants during Texas legislative session, I think that's kind of Belinda's position's role now, and I know we wanted to involve them, uh, involve this person in that, but, uh, I, I just thought maybe we should change that up a little bit to where it's, because I think that's right in that, under Belinda's roles, current roles, job description is the legislative.
Okay.
Right, I mean, so I was just trying to make it.
Well, keep in mind, this job description came from what used to be Tyner's, and then Tyner was promoted out of that governmental affair, so he took a little bit with him to this position, and then Belinda came in.
Right, I just don't want it to look like we're trying to take something from Belinda's position necessarily, and, and I'm just saying that, I don't know how you soften that, or maybe you just take it out, or you just, because this person's gonna oversee the court admin's staff and department heads, so that's gonna be kind of what they do anyway, what he or she does anyway, so maybe you just take that line out.
Which one was it again, I'm sorry?
That's okay, it's on page two, serves as liaison, I'm sorry, serves as primary contact for legislative consultants during Texas legislative session. Maybe you just take that out, because that's currently under someone else's job description?
Okay.
Just a suggestion, nobody, I mean, I don't.
Do we wanna change serves as to maybe oversees?
Uh, you.
Because.
Well, you're, they're gonna, they're gonna oversee.
They're overseeing the department.
I think that's a fine word.
Yeah.
Overseas?
I mean, that's, that certainly accomplishes it.
Whatever, take it out, put overseas, as long as it's not taking away from somebody else.
How does, how do you feel about that, John, is that word okay, I mean, overseas?
Yeah, I think overseas is fine, I, I, but I agree with, with distinguishing that there's already a position that handles it, and we don't wanna overwhelm, but they definitely need to be a part of the legislative process, just not maybe those sole contacts.
Correct, okay.
Right, and then, um, page three, where it, um, uh, hold on, page three, where it says coordinates preparation of briefing materials and assistance facilitating media coverage. I, I think we have a PIO that we've recently added to the mix, to me, that's a PIO responsibility, so again, maybe use the word overseas there.
Okay.
Because I would think the person would oversee the person that does that, right? Uh, let's see, and then, and I can show you mine on different places, Julie, where I just stuck in the word supervision and management of, and took it, um, like, on page four, it says provides organizational leadership and direction, I just put provides organizational leadership and supervision and management of, because, um, and I did that on several other places, so wherever it says direction or collaboration, I changed to supervision. So I can sh, show you each place that was, again, a couple lines down where it says monitor and coordinate activities, I put, um, supervise and coordinate activities.
Okay, that's kind of the same, it's kind of like a consistency, that's what it is?
All I'm trying to do is change the word to supervise from monitor and oversee.
Does that seem fair? I think it's fair, I mean, what else you got?
Um, and then on the education and experience, I put, um, uh, I put the, I think we would, we'd said preferred, because we wanted to, um.
It's a bachelor's degree required, and then they can have a master's or a graduate degree, and that's gonna be preferred.
Right, and I, and I just, I guess the word preferred, I, I'm sorry, I said but not required, but you, you believe preferred?
That does it.
Says the same thing.
And that says the same thing.
Says the same thing.
Okay, uh, and then what I would, what I had suggested adding there would be, um, or equivalent private section, uh, under the, where it says minimum six years of increasingly responsible administrative and management experience with state or local government, and I put or equivalent private sector management experience, because I certainly, I doubt we get private sector on this, but I would certainly not want to eliminate a private sector person who has a great deal of management skill and might wanna change their life.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think there's a problem, you'd wanna, you'd wanna cast the net wide, okay? And so, I mean, I don't have a problem with that either, I mean, I think it's like anything, you could say county management or public ser, you know, policy, I would say, public, what, public service, governance preferred, or something like that, but, but, or equivalent, you know, private sector.
Okay.
Something like that, I mean, just cast the, not, cast the net wide so that somebody, let's say somebody was a CEO of a major organization, right? That could be a really wonderful background.
Absolutely, and might be, like I say, might be retired and looking for something else to put their skilled work to. And then on language skills, um, I, I, I don't know if we can, I don't know if we can do this, but I would like to add bilingual preferred but not required, because certainly, you know, taking into account all the needs of our citizens, that might be, I don't know if that's, is that legal to put in? Can you do that, I mean, is that okay?
I don't like to, it's.
I just, I'm not saying required, I'm just saying preferred.
I think we can handle that during the interview.
Yeah, during the interview, it probably count as, you know, a good, a good sign to give somebody a high mark.
Right.
Okay, so you don't think we could just put?
I don't wanna screen on that.
Because?
Cause I would actually maybe be eliminating somebody and preferring them, you would be getting them anyway, you would be getting the applications anyway. So at the time of the interview, you can ask.
There's a lot of people that they say to me all the time, you know, I understand it, but I don't speak it, you know? A lot of people say that, so that they're not really bilingual, right?
Yeah, I just, I think the more we can do that, the better, but if, that's.
I agree, I mean, I agree, obviously, that's, that's somebody who's got a lot of, lends a lot of, um, it's an asset, but I, I think, I think now that we've said it, maybe that's a good thing, right? We, we hear that, and we'll, we can take that under consideration.
I don't wanna eliminate anybody either, I really don't, I just, you know, anyway, it, it, okay, and then the last kind of bit, not big point, but point that I had was, and I don't really have good language for that, but it's on overseeing of the agenda and kind of being the, you know, court's representative is helping make sure the agenda gets set.
And that's always been the case, right?
Well, the kind of the, well, yeah, I, I guess, I'm just trying to make sure that this person has the ability to, um, set, help, help, uh, follow the policies of the court in setting the agenda so that we, we don't accidentally have any missteps on backup, or missteps on agenda language getting changed, or missteps in there that this person would be the, the real go-to person on the agenda.
And that's, that's good, Julie.
I just wanna stress it, because it's, it's so important to the court.
It's a, it's, so that's really more into the duties.
That, that's in there, isn't it, under rev, it says reviews relevant agenda items.
I was just.
Maybe put back, reviews, uh, relevant agenda items and com, and composition thereof of the, uh, of the agenda book.
And I'm just trying to beef it up a little bit somehow to make, make sure that this person understands the importance of this agenda to this, that this person understands how important the agenda is to this court, in backup, in agenda language, and so forth. Getting it clear, I mean, I just wanna beef it up, that's all I'm saying, I just wanna beef up the job description, because I think this, that's a, I think this whole court, that's a priority. Okay, that's, I ran through that as quick as I could, but there's some other places that I substituted supervise, and I, you know, that kind of stuff in there, but I think you get the gist, and so that's just, that's just my opinion, I, I'm looking forward to hearing from others.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, um, I mean, I don't have a problem with any of what you just said, if that's.
Sounds pretty good.
It sounds good to me, and all it does is really kind of create a consistency, um, to the real substantive change, which is that he recommends, and the court seems to agree with the fact that, uh, this person would have department heads, you know, move in that direction, uh, he would provide that oversight. And of course, we'd have to change those job descriptions, because we'd have to, and probably create a little bit of a training when we hired this person, right? So that this person would have, um, but I mean, we need to make certain that, are you asking this person to hire and fire?
No, no.
So if you're not, well, just so you know, uh, when you oversee somebody and you don't have a hiring or firing, it's worthless, but okay.
I think, sorry, I think they should absolutely have involvement, but I, I don't, I think the court has, oh, sorry, I think the court has those responsibilities now, and I'm not, I don't, I didn't see that in here, and I didn't add that, but.
Well, that's why I put department heads, you know, assist and provides guidance to the department heads and, um,
Yeah.
maintains co, contact, makes, has collaborative relationships with department heads.
Yeah, I don't care about, I, I don't mind that language.
But I didn't put specifically will hire and fire, or have that disciplinary authority over the department heads, I mean.
Well, maybe, well, what I would do then, in order to not cut that position up, if you're gonna have somebody report to somebody, but they know they can come to commissioners and try to get, you know, favor, the best thing to do is you keep to your hiring and firing with commissioners' court, but you allow your court manager to exercise reprimand capability or recommendation to hire or recommendation to fire, but don't give oversight to someone that has no, that there's no teeth to it, because that's, that's doing nothing. That person will be, will be, will be not, there will not be teeth in what you're asking, if you really want them to, to report to them, because that's, that's, that's the essence of a manager, ask Peter Zanoni how effective he would be if he was not hiring and firing people.
Well, we can certainly, I, I mean, I didn't put that in, but we can certainly have that discussion, I, I, I am.
Or have a hybrid.
Yeah, maybe there's a hybrid, because I, I really think there's gotta be some hybrid there on, on this, because I, I want this person to be the person that these department heads can look to for real guidance and help on a regular basis, that this commissioners' court can't do, and it's hard to do, and there's five of us, you know, and, and they have to try to find all, you know, it's hard, so I'm just trying to streamline this down. So if you got a hybrid suggestion, maybe throw it out there.
I haven't, like, thrown it out in my, in writing, but we could certainly work on that, what I think we really wanna do is got, get all the first things you said in there, and here, I don't know if this court's comfortable waiting till October 18th to bring it back, but you could get all of that, and then I, we could take a stab at the hybrid.
And there may be an issue if the court is appointing, uh, if the court is appointing as a whole a department head of some kind, then you probably won't want to abdicate the power of firing that person or hiring that person, so, so those things you won't wanna put in that job description.
I guess maybe, um, I, supervisory is important, but maintaining that, maybe, hybrid's a good word, so maybe that's the only one we could leave for maybe Julie, you and Jenny to sit down and maybe come up with something that, I think you're hearing what, and I haven't heard from everybody, but I, I, I think you're hearing what we're talking about, because, um, because one of the things I wanted to talk about was how we go about, and, and having a policy in place on how we go about hiring people that the court appoints. You know, we've had some discussion on that in the past, and again, that was a phone call, Julie, that, I'm sorry, I'd like to say I called, you called me back, and I didn't get back to you, and I apologize, um, was, was kind of figuring how we're gonna do that too, so we can, we could wait and talk about that later, since we're gonna wait and talk about the hybrid later, but, um, I, I think we definitely have to have a consistent. about the hybrid later, but I, I think we definitely have to have a consistency on that as well, so.
Okay.
Teresa has a question.
So what I'm going to do is ask to table please till October the 18th. And Julie, if you would take all of that information, but I do need, like, that's right around the corner. So if you could do that and get it back to us very quickly.
Okay.
And that way it'll give me this rest of the week to, to work on that penmanship. I'm going to, you know, that way we can get it back to everybody. Let's really try hard to make the 18th the day that we adopt the job description, please.
Absolutely. Teresa, I think Teresa had a question before you tabled.
I'll make it. And I'd like that second.
Teresa had a question before.
Excuse me. I was just curious on what you meant by this position being accountable for the department's performance, their budget.
In other words, that each department has certain goals and objectives that they set out every year, budgetary goals for their department. So this person would help make sure that those goals and objectives are being met. That would be my definition of it.
Yeah, I think what she was concerned about, now I'm remembering, is that, that's the auditor, you, you're not, you still, you want the auditor still to be the ultimate responsive person to giving your monthly reports and showcasing. He typically tells the department, hey, you're behind or you're ahead or.
No, I'm not, yeah, I mean, whatever.
I think you're just meaning more of a collaborative, let's help you be successful.
Right.
Right?
Right.
Yeah. And just so you know.
And the auditor's role doesn't change. I mean.
Okay. Because I think that was the concern is that this person would have to be like five people in order to do all these functions.
No, I mean, just as a representative.
Does that help, Teresa? Yeah.
Just as a representative of the court when Dale starts talking about budget and doing things like that, just so that, you know, he has someone else to do that. Is that okay?
Yeah, I think that's, I think that's fine. And, and for what it's worth, you know, the administrative duties that I have as county judge, I meet with department heads, attend all the meetings. We really do work on that and we always work with court administration. So that's something that we do all the time. I will say that prior to COVID, we were pretty religious about it with department head meetings. They were incredibly successful. Again, all of that's done with court administration. But there's no doubt that we could, you know, remember, remember what we've just come through, right? But there's no doubt that we can strengthen that by writing it. But we do it anyway, so I think it's a good thing. Administratively, what you just said is, is very important. And I think that we need to continue the practices that we built in 2019 and have carried over. So many of them are virtual now, I guess is what I'm saying. But in the future, we hope those not to be virtual. And, and so I hope that that's, that's something that we can do better.
Yeah, and I think just like the, Tyler talked about how his job's evolved, this could also, you know, I mean, this is a starting point, you know, some of it may work great, some of it may not. We may have to come back and tweak it later, but I, I'm just trying to, you know, just a starting point.
Yeah, I don't think there's a problem with that. Like I said, I think it's consistent with our pattern and practice right now. Go ahead.
Instead of tabling it, maybe take action to direct HR to update, to just drop descriptions and.
Yeah, I don't mind doing that. I, I think she's, as I say, I think she's got it, but I think the motion is to adopt that which you have heard here today to update the job description to include the changes that, that you've heard regarding the court manager. And that please bring it back on October the 18th for a final approval. However, in advance of October 18th, please get it to us so that we can look at it for a final review.
I would re, I'd second that new motion.
And all those in favor signify by saying aye. Okay, so at this time, everybody, this is where we go into executive session and, and let me read the magic words, but then I'd ask you to clear the courtroom. Connie, after I finish reading, please take down the mics and then we will come back in short order. For the clerk, it's about four items. I don't know what to say except for give us 30 to 45 minutes.
Give us like five minutes to get back up here.
Of course, we will. And executive session is, I'm giving public notice at this time that commissioner's court may elect to go into executive session to discuss items that were listed on the agenda or listed anywhere in the agenda, provided by the Open Meetings Act, Chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code, and of course, accordance with Vernon's Texas Codes, 55107172345686 and 87. We're doing so to consult with our attorney on the various matters relating to real property, personnel matters, county advisory board, security devices, economic development negotiations, and any other matter that might be discussed in executive session. We'll come back afterwards into open session, take any action as appropriately needed. The time is 4:03 PM and we're off the record. Test, test. All right. We are out of executive session and the time is 5:20 PM. And we had discussion on items A, items number four and five. Item, I think that was it. And at this time, we really don't have any action to take other than just to continue to direct the county attorney to continue to supply information regarding eligibility, regarding our premium pay. There's a lot of nuances. There are a lot of nuances to a premium pay and we've asked her to bring us back more documentation as she has her discussions with Hagerty and the auditor. And we plan on doing that on the 27th of October. So that'll gives us just a little bit of time to really make certain that we have as much information as, as we have possible. So I think that's, that's the, that's really the only action is more of a direction. And then at this time, if there is no other further comments from executive session, we'll move straight into adjournments and memory. And the court this week has quite a few. We'll start with Commissioner Chesney.
Thank you, Judge. The, the first one I have today is Mr. Barnes, who was the founder of Candy Cane Lane. For those of you who have enjoyed all of the great, wonderful memories of driving through that neighborhood to see the incredible Christmas spirit. His son, Eric, said that his dad was an Arkansas native who moved to Corpus Christi in the mid-sixties, working for the Corpus Christi Army Depot for more than 35 years. He was a Texas Tech graduate, award veteran and a Rotary Club member, probably the most known for his scout master of two, troop 232. But what he cherished most was his family and the season of giving, as is evidenced by Candy Cane Lane. Eric said, Mr. Barnes, we reunited with his wife and sister. Corpus Christi benefited from a great man and a great heart. The second one I have today, members of the court, are Chris Hernandez. She was the field unit supervisor for the juvenile probation department for 42.7 years. And I'm just going to read the email that John Mylum, who is the deputy director of special programs over there, sent out to everybody at the probation department. And I can tell you, this lady was like their mother. She was an amazing woman. I worked with her quite a bit when I was there as, as judge and just a huge loss. She barely just retired and unfortunately lost her, her, her life. As many of you already know, we lost field supervisor Chris Hernandez this weekend after a long and vigilant fight with a myriad of medical issues. Please keep her family and friends in your thoughts and prayers during this time of great sorrow. She recently retired after 42.7 years as an employee here at Nuasis County Juvenile Department. She hired, mentored and supervised many of us over the years. And this is again, the words of John Mylum. And was extremely proud of her time and accomplishments here. She hired this gangly kid out of detention in 1930 to become a probation officer, 1990, sorry. She took a chance on many of us and had a keen eye for seeing the best in all of us. She could be stern with that knowing glance, and I had a couple of those knowing glances shot my way a few times, that would go beyond words to redirect us at times. She was gifted with the ability to supervise without ever raising her voice or demeaning the person she was conversing with. And although we lost a loyal friend and confidant to many of us, community has sadly lost a guiding light who always looked out for the underdog. As so many of us know, over her many years here, Chris would organize fundraisers for staff in need. She would arrange holiday food, drives for many of our at-risk families and was always, every year, take clothes to the homeless missions to keep those that she could clothe and, and with a home. She did this out of her own pocket more often than not and always with little or no fanfare. That is how Mr. Mylum chose to remember Chriselda, Chris Hernandez. He chooses to carry on the tremendous legacy she left to those, to care for those he works with and so improve his community in any little but impactful way. Chris Hernandez will be missed. She was a wonderful, wonderful employee of Nuasis County. And our condolences go out to Chris's family and her extended family at the juvenile probation department. I, I don't have the obituary for my friend Zach Gilmore, who lost his life in Mexico. Zach was in Mexico with his family and unfortunately was in, was snorkeling and, and was unable to be revived when they got him onto the beach. He was there with his wife and, and, and family and it's just a devastating loss. Zach was just one of those guys that if you knew, he, he laughed and he was robust and he just, he believed in God more than anything else. So as we talked about him today in our reunion group, men's group, who Zach was a member of, we all know Zach is in heaven, but we also all know Zach may be arguing a little bit with God up there right now to make his point because he, he loved to debate the Bible and loved to debate in life. And so to the Gilmore family, who've been in this community for many, many years, they were, they own flower shops all over Corpus Christi for many years. They recently, in the last couple of years, lost Mr. Gilmore, AC Senior. And Zach is survived by his wife and daughter and his brother Mike Gilmore and their family and AC Gilmore and his family. And certainly want to pass on extreme condolences to the Gilmore family for the loss of, of my friend Zach Gilmore.
The obituary on Depak Bijaj Khamor Desai. He was born on November the 10th, 1950 and passed on September the 18th, 2021 at the age of 70. Worked for Nuasis County for many years, was a full-time employee and a contract employee. Was very dedicated to his job and will be missed by his county family. Depak, an accomplished engineer and Navy veteran. Depak Desai's son of late Virginia Moore, David Kudmore, Desai and reverted mother, Sushila Desai will be remembered for his generosity of spirit, work ethics and living life on his own terms. Depak was born in Rangoon, Roma on November the 10th. Had cancer for many years. He was surrounded by his wife, Toileen and children and Jenna Jackson and Vijay Desai during his last moments on earth. Depak was schooled at the prestigious Shiri Shirvachi Preparatory Military School in Prum along schoolmates who were members of the Indian Royal Team. In his final year, Depak was named Head Boy, which is the most distinguished honor given to the student showing highest excellence in academics, athletics and leadership. Depak went on to study engineering at the Indian Institute of Technology, Karupu, where he earned an engineering degree with. Depak played, displayed his patriotism and devotion to the United States in countless years and ways. He served with immense pride as lieutenant commander in the United States Navy Reserves. After retirement from the military, he continued to participate in projects concerning intelligence for the federal government and in service for the safety of his fellow Americans. Through his career, Depak erected his engineering expertise to the city of Houston and Nuasis County. Depak exhibited an unrevealed zest for life, a protective nature for his family and close friends. And he attracted new friends everywhere he went. He especially loved debates about politics, stock and business investments and science. He worked tirelessly, tirelessly to provide for his family. He loved traveling the world with his wife Troy. Depak is survived by his beloved wife, Toileen Desai, children Jenna, Jackson, Vijay Desai, son-in-law Nathan Jackson, mother Sushila Desai, siblings Perdip Desai, Minu Shai and, and Jenica Walker. Grandchildren, Avery and Nolan Jackson, nephews and nieces, Giselle Shai, Tijal Shai, Shurek Desai, Reva Walker and Chester Walker. And an incredible family and including Shubha Desai, Carol Desai, Joseph, Badell, Rakish Desai, Dimple Desai, Rohan Desai, Jennifer Linton, Josh Newcomer, Jessica Ingus, Kayla Cordell, Kale Alomar, Devak Shai, Kavya Newcomer, Bayan Shai, Canyon Newcomer, Aim Shai, Men Abin Baharamini and Audrey de Soja dosa. Depak is preceded in death by his father, Bijaj Khamor Desai. Grandmother, Free Ku, Berdamin, what was called her Motipa Desai. Uncle Baca Desai, Aunt Kakaki Desai, cousin Sunel Desai and cousin Pinku Desai. He will be missed and by the, I know his staff at Public Works more than, and also the other, other family members in the Nuasis County courthouse. He'll always be remembered for his smile and always wanting to educate you and the things he knew. He was always happy-go-lucky person and so he will be missed not only here, but his family will miss him also. And prayers and condolences go out to his family. Thank you.
Mr. Modas.
Thank you, Judge. I have a couple I want to share. Richard Medina, U.S. veteran, passed about three weeks ago. He's a member of church and so he's church family, so he would be dearly missed. Elizabeth Betty McCaskill. I knew Betty from my days at CPS and share her obituary. She passed away on September 18th at the age of 80. She was born in Indiana and moved to Corpus Christi in 1951. And she is preceded in death by her loving husband, Bill McCaskill. She was a beloved mother, sister, aunt, grandmother, great-grandmother and friend. She attended St. Patrick Catholic School, her elementary and middle school years, and graduated from Encornet Orde Academy High School in 1959. She began her career at CPNL until she got married in 1963. She stayed home to raise four children. After several years doing that, she went, decided to go back to work. In the 1980s, she managed the school cafeteria at St. Patrick's. In 1988, she began her career with Child Protective Services as, as a secretary. She was admin assistant. She worked there for 27 years, retiring in May 2015. And she was the admin assistant to the regional director for CPS, which was a big undertaking in about 20 counties in the South Texas area. During that time, she received two associate degrees from Delmar College and she touched many lives. She was always passionate about any career she had. She was very strong in her Catholic faith. She was a lector and member of the altar society at, at St. Patrick's Church for many years. She leaves behind to cherish a memory, her brother, David, her son, her daughters and grandchildren and great-grandchildren. And Betty was one of those people that not where, when someone passes that you say, oh, gosh, you know, she was such a great person. say, oh, gosh, you know, she was such a great person, or you have fond memories. It seems many times when someone passes that you maybe think of all the good things and never the bad, but I can never once think of anything bad about Betty McCaskill. She was a sweet person, uh, working in a difficult agency that, uh, was not perfect, but she was there in the support and behind the scenes, supporting the, the administration and just all of the workers and staff of CPS. And, uh, she did that without reservation. And so anytime I came across her, it was always just a pleasant time for me and ended up being a pleasant day because she was just such a sweet person and such a great, um, personality and the way she carried herself and just made you feel around her. So, uh, she will greatly be missed. Also, uh, I know, Judge, you're going to read about Sissy Ferenthal, and also my condolences to Depak's, uh, family as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Hernandez.
Thank you, Judge. Arnold Armando Alvarez came into this world 12/18/1955, left this world 9/4/2021 at the age of 65. He was, he was a past employee of Noises County Hilton Community Center from 6/14/2014 to 1/4/2018 as a parks, building, and grounds worker. Worker one. He also served in the United States Air Force from 6/7/1973 to 2/3/1975 as a aerospace ground equipment repairman. He also was able to complete one of his greatest accomplishments on 10/7/1982, receiving his GED certification. Arnold was a simple man, the type of man who touched so many people in his life. Arnold was the type of man who would give his, give the shirt off his back to help another in need. Never did he hesitate to help even a stranger. No questions asked. He was known for his humor and passion for politics. He loved watching old Western movies, fishing, prospecting for lost treasure. Our hearts are broken to lose him. You will be dearly missed. Please pray for the family of Mr. Alvarez. Thank you.
Is that all?
That's it.
Okay, I'd like to read three. Um, I have three adjournments in memory. The first is Iris Selden Learman. She was my friend. Ms. Learman, who fought a courageous battle with cancer, passed away peacefully on September 15th, 2021. When people describe someone as she truly never met a stranger, Iris was who they were referring to. She was born in Miami Beach, and after high school, she sought out adventure and moved to Beverly Hills. After a couple of years in California, she moved back home to Washington, DC, where she lived for many years, serving as the Director of Fundraising for Cystic Fibrosis in the metro DC area. After several years, she then moved back to Florida to be closer to, to Mom Miriam. In 1989, she decided to go to her 20th high school reunion, where as a chance, where as chance would have it, she reacquainted with Andy, who was also a member of her class. Time went by, and at the 25th reunion, they both realized they were meant for each other, and the rest is history. Iris can be described as someone who touched so many people who valued her friendship. Those who were fortunate to be her friend appreciated her unfiltered honesty and sense of humor, knowing it was always from the heart. She was generous, caring, always upbeat, and truly loved her children Leslie and Jeff and their friends dearly. Education was important to Iris, and after 20 years, she went back to college and earned a degree from Texas A&amp;M Corpus Christi. She volunteered for many organizations, including Clowns Who Care at Driscoll Children's Hospital, the Jewish Community Center, where she served as president, Congregation Beth Israel, Board of Trustees, as well as president of the CBI Sisterhood. She loved to travel with Andy, and she took many trips, including the Arctic Exploration, a train trip across India, wildlife safari in Tanzania, across China and the South Pacific Islands. She's preceded by her love, beloved Mom Miriam and her father Philip, and she's survived by her husband and soulmate Andy, their beloved children Leslie, uh, of Newcastle, Australia, and her son Jeff Learman, and her grandchildren Julian and Diego, as well as numerous relatives, but felt closest to her cousins Mitchell Corey Maslenov, Jill King, and Patty Maslenov. She leaves behind her best friend Norma Levens, as well as so many other close personal friends, too numerous to mention, but you know who you are. Last but not least, her beloved and faithful cavalier Dylan, who was always by her side. Iris greatly appreciated honesty, friendship, and care by her oncologist at MD Anderson, Dr. Charles Levinbach, and his NP Kimberly Burns, whom she became very close to and who cared for her very much. She was also very fortunate to have many caregivers and caretakers, and the heartfelt thanks and appreciation to her cherished friend Elsa Amaro, Melissa Garcia RN, with Nurses on Wheels and hospice, and all their caretakers, as well as the caretakers from home instead, who were there for Iris. In lieu of flowers, they did request, um, that donations be considered in her memory to the CC Jewish Community Center and to MD Anderson Cancer Center for Research in Uterine Cancer. I just also want to express to our friend, um, who's helped the county on many matters in the last year, Jeff, on condolences on the loss of his mom, and also, uh, to Andy and, and to the sister and to the whole Learman family. May she rest in peace. We also have someone close to our family who experienced a terrible loss, and while we mentioned it last court, it goes, um, without saying that we extend once again our condolences and our prayers for Teresa Mclemore and her family. Linda Prudhomme was a loving mother of seven sons, and she was devoted to her family, friends, and God. And after 72 years of old, she passed away due to COVID complications. She was from, uh, Louisiana. She was born in 1949 in Lafayette, and she rested in peace in Baton Rouge, Louisiana, on September 21st. She was the twin sister of Lena Carmichael, who is the sister-in-law of Teresa Mclemore in our court administration, and we just want to express our condolences. And what a beautiful picture of, um, your sister-in-law's sister, uh, in the tulips. So, her home-going, home, uh, yes, her home-going service was, um, is coming up. And so again, when you see your family, please express our condolences to them. And then finally, Commissioner Modest, um, mentioned that one of the greats passed away, uh, peacefully at home on September 26th, 2021, after a long battle with Parkinson's, and she was six days shy of her 95th birthday. For women, and for women in politics, I speak none other of the great and the first woman I ever campaigned for when I was very young, is Frances Tarleton, otherwise known as Sissy Ferenthal. She was born here in Corpus Christi in 1926. She was the daughter of Catherine Bluntzer and Benjamin Tarleton Jr., and she attended Corpus Christi High School. She graduated from Hockaday, Vassar, and the University of Texas School of Law at the age of 22. She married George Edward Ferenthal, a Belgian-born linguist and an Army Air Corps veteran of World War II. She gave birth to five children in five years. Throughout her life, Sissy was a trailblazer, trailblazer in Texas and a, and involved in the national progressive politics, as well as in the international peace and human rights movement. In 1968, she was elected to the Texas House of Representatives, where she was the only woman, where she fought for racial and gender justice and against corruption. Her dogged pursuit of the investigation of the Sharpstown scandal, assorted collection of government corruption, um, propelled her into the gubernatorial race in 1972. She lost a runoff election to Dolph Briscoe, but became the national face of Texas progressives for more than a generation. At the 1972 Democratic National Convention in Miami, Sissy was tapped as a potential vice presidential running mate for George McGovern. And although she came in second, she was the first woman whose nomination for that position had ever been brought to a floor vote. Sissy went on to serve in numerous positions in progressive organizations and higher education, and into her 90s, she provided a steady and necessary voice for change at the grassroots and at the governmental levels. She's preceded in death by sons James and Vincent. She's survived by her sister Genevieve Heron, her three beloved children, George Ferenthal II, Washington DC, Benjamin Dudley Tarleton Ferenthal, and Emmy, Emily Chevalier Ferenthal of Houston, three grandchildren, three great-grandchildren, and of course, countless of friends that admires. Although the burial is private, uh, there will be an in-person memorial held sometime later this year at the University of Texas School of Law. There's not enough words on two pieces of paper to talk about the legacy of Sissy Ferenthal. I would not be sitting here today, nor would Jenny, nor would any female in politics, if Sissy had not been our first trailblazer. So, our condolences to the Ferenthal family, and we look forward to honoring her in a memorial service later this year. As always, the court joins, uh, with all of the families that we've lost. We've had a very difficult past seven days, losing so many to COVID-19 in our community, as well as, um, members of Noises County's family, uh, most notably, Depak Desai. With that, that concludes our adjournment in memory. The time is 5:46 PM. We are adjourned, and we will see everybody back on October the 18th, 2021.
And just a housekeeping matter, it, it, the, the 18th will likely be a long agenda. I know we had received one recommendation that may, we may want to start earlier than nine o'clock, perhaps eight or 8:15, 8:30. Um, I didn't know what y'all's sense was about the start time for the 18th.
I'm in for eight.
If we can just poll the, the court, and if it works with, with all of us, uh, including the clerk, I'm, I'm happy to start early at 8:00 AM, but why don't you just double-check that we can establish a quorum at 8:00 AM? And if so, we'll have to repost it?
I'm in for whatever early time. Can we do, I'd like to look at it permanently, so whatever the court can...
Well, let's bring that up on a future agenda item permanently, but at least for this one, why don't we go ahead and, and check with, uh, everybody? And then when you post, we'll post for 8:00 AM with sort of the acknowledgement today that that's the will of the court.
Take 30.
I'm sorry.
Oh, no, I was asking, do you, do you want to give me copies of the obituaries so I don't, if we can get the names spelled?
Yeah, we'll, we'll provide them to your office.
That'd be great. Give to me. Perfect.
Take one and I'll have to email the other. Sorry.